Councilmember Knight.
Here from my home in Dexter, Michigan.
Councilmember Michelle.
I don't see him on yet either.
No, I didn't. I did not either. Mayor Keough?
Participating virtually from my home in Dexter, Michigan.
Student Rep Gilbert?
I'm here present from Webster Township.
Okay. And Councilmember, or it's Councilmember, Student Rep Malik.
Hi, I'm here. I'm in the city of Dexter.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks Carol. We'll keep an eye out for Donna and Zach. Item C on the agenda is approval of the agenda for this night's meeting. Is there a motion from somebody to approve the agenda?
I'm moved.
Moved by Julie Knight. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great. Did I hear Jamie?
Yep.
Okay, great. So we had a motion by Julie, second by Jamie to approve the agenda. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Okay. Cousins?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Keough?
Yes.
And I've not seen Fisher or Michelle yet. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, Zach, I see. Okay, Zach, this is the agenda to approve?
Yep.
Okay. So Fisher is still absent.
Okay. Welcome, Zach. Okay, so we are on item D, which is non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak this evening? If so, you can use the raise hand feature, which is located on the bottom of the participant window. If you don't know where that is, if you hold your mouse over the bottom of your screen, there will be some things that pop up. One on the left usually is participants. If you click on that, the participant window will open up and at the bottom, there's a raise hand button. If not, if you're calling in from your cell phone, you can dial star nine. That will also, I believe, alert us that you would like to speak. Justin, are you seeing any hands or anybody notifying? I'm not seeing anybody notifying us that they want to speak tonight.
Not as of right now.
Okay, thank you for the help with that. All right, I'm going to move on to new business item E, which is consideration of the Dexter Light Parade. And I'm reminding council, just so we're all aware, if there's a motion that we can make and then get a second, then we can have discussion. I would appreciate that this evening. You know, one way or the, one way or another.
I would, I'm happy to make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Griffin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Knight. Okay, so motion by Jamie, second by Julie. Thank you both. Okay, now we can discuss this item. Jamie, as the maker of the motion, I'll let you go first in the discussion if you have something you'd like to say or add.
Um, yeah, I mean, I appreciated, I think we, um, what was this afternoon or at some point, we got some additional input from the health department. I think for me, it comes down to definition of venue. This is a parade route that goes throughout much of downtown. I, I don't have concerns about people not willing to maintain social distance or do things in a safe way. I think it would be a nice festive event for the community that people could choose to participate in or not, depending on their comfort level. So I guess I'm, I'm comfortable with this the way it is.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Knight, anything to add as the secondor?
Um, yes, as I said before, I hate to deprive all of our citizens from all the activities at the holiday time. And I guess I agree with Jamie. I think people are so mindful of masking and distancing today. I think, I don't think it'll be a problem. So I would be in favor of allowing it to happen. But I do understand that we had issues, comments from the health department and other areas that some, that may not be the best thing to do.
Gotcha. Thank you. Wa, you have your hand up?
Yes, thanks.
Okay.
I, I do have concerns about this and I, I maybe I'm less trustworthy in other people's behavior, but I, I'm not sure that I would go so far as to say that I can personally support trusting other people to be mindful, just based on what I've seen out, out and about. I also just want to point out a couple of other things. We've said no to a lot of people this year and we've said no to people during times when there have been far fewer cases. I went through the, the numbers today on the county website and just for example, in the two week period from September 24th to this October 7th, which is when we would have had Apple Days in our zip code, there were three cases. And in the last two weeks, there were 85. So our total count has been, where is it? Two hundred and some. And 36 weeks, it was 188 cases in 36 weeks. And then last two weeks was 85. And I couldn't get a breakdown further back.
I lost listening to our. Wa, we, we lost your.
I know, I know. It's, it should be back. Sorry, I saw that.
Okay, go ahead.
Where, where did it cut out on me?
In the last two weeks, 85 cases.
Okay, yeah. So I also want to point out that while there aren't a lot of winter parades in Michigan, I did a little poking around to see what other communities may or may not be doing on this particular issue. And I don't know if any of you have ever been to the holiday parade of the city of Rochester, but it's, um, it's a really great parade. It's their 69th year this year and they have canceled it. Um, I know that one is a lot larger than what we, we would be proposing, but also in light of the fact that that email communication from the health department was not positive, I don't think this is something I can support.
Thank you, Wa.
I'll, I'll jump in.
Okay, Paul.
You know, I, I, I'm a lot like Julie and Jamie as well, that we can't just cut out everything, except that we, we're not at the levels we were even doing Dexter days. And we were thinking about somehow we could solve some of those problems. And then the Apple Days came along and you know, it's, uh, you know, the Rotary closed off the Royal Bay Parade and, you know, even before that. So it, it seems like we've done a, you know, a lot of closing down, but I don't know how we can indemnify ourselves if we have to do that. I, I use indemnify with, with parentheses, parentheses around it because I don't think we could probably sue, but if, what if it's a whole group of people decide to line up along Main Street, coming out from restaurants, stand there side by side? Or, or just decide that's where they're going to gather that, that, that day. And I, I'm not sure that by the ninth, that, that the order won't be, you know, completely reissued either. So I guess as a, as a one of more precaution, knowing that this is being spread a lot in this area, more so as Wa just pointed out, that I would be probably voting against it unless I could hear some other strong arguments that this is going to be okay. At, at once I thought, you know, that we could spread it out and people were just sitting in their cars along the road and stand by their house. And maybe that would be work, maybe that would work and maybe will. But I can't guarantee that.
All set, Paul?
Yeah, I think so. Right now.
Okay. Well, if, if not, raise your hand. I, I didn't mean to cut you off. I just. Um, Alex, you have your hand up and then I'm going to go to Zach, okay?
I feel like everyone's missed out on a lot this year. We weren't able to spend the holidays with our family. But nonetheless, I feel as if it's inappropriate for us to allow this parade to happen. I feel like people might be social distancing and wearing their masks at the parade, but afterwards they might go and do things. They might go to the grocery store. They might go get a coffee. And they're going to be congregating in areas outside the parade. And it doesn't feel right to be encouraging people to leave their homes when cases are still on the rise. And it just doesn't seem safe for this to happen.
Thank you. Zach, I saw you had your hand up and then I'll go to Wa and to Griffin. Or Jamie.
Uh, this is a technical question. I saw on the application that they were requesting the constabulary to block off the streets. I have witnessed the incredible gymnastics that our, our DPW has gone through with a relatively mild route for homecoming parades, trucks going all over the place and blocking off streets and unblocking streets. From a practical perspective, I don't think just having our, our constables go up and, and block the streets as they make the turn is, is practical that at the very least, it would require a dozen folks from the organization helping with that, like the folks with the, the Turkey Trot do. Let's see. So, and it is, it is a bit challenging. One of the things with the senior procession is one of the conditions was that they, they not advertise it. So it was to just be family members popping up to do, to watch it. And I believe one of the elements of this type of an event is that you want to advertise it so people can come out. Firstly, I wouldn't feel nervous being out in this environment, but there are issues that I see with public health that I'm having a problem squaring around with. And I'm good.
Okay, thanks, thanks Zach. Wa, you have your blue hand up again, please?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to add another couple of quick things. I just wanted to point out that we just told the people organizing the ice sculptures that they can't do anything that would promote congregating, like a demonstration. And I see this as sort of contradicting that.
You can add again, Wa. Okay.
Sorry, I know I probably paused there for a second, but I was just saying that we can look at the government language and we can, you know, we can pick it apart and make it work the way that we want. But to what Paul said, do we want to, how would we feel? How would we feel if this turned into some sort of event that, you know, was a cluster of cases? Personally, I don't feel comfortable with that. I don't, that wouldn't feel good to me as a council member. And that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Wa. Jamie, you're next.
Yep, I just wanted to clarify that, I mean, I was not on the council when decisions were made about Apple Days and Dexter Days or even Ice Fest or the skating rink. I think one difference I see is the space over which the event is taking place. So I just did a quick map. I think it's point seven miles from Main Street up broad, all the way up to Kensington. So I can see people congregating at Monument Park, being a much more confined space. Then, you know, an almost one mile parade route where you have both sides of the street. Another thing that comes to mind, and I know, you know, the order talks about exercising, recreation, things like that. I think about the new connector path that I love, that we use often. And I think they, that word, the health order might call that like incidental, like congregating. I guess for me, it's over a wide enough space. It's different than an event specifically at Monument Park, which is a much smaller location. It's both sides of the street, almost a mile long. We have this new path that's frequented very often. People are often passing in close proximity. Those are the reasons I see a difference, although, you know, I appreciate the other perspectives people have. I just wanted to clarify what I think is different between an event at Monument Park and a parade.
Fair enough. Thank you for, for those comments. Bella and then Donna Fisher.
Um, yeah, I just, I agree with Alex and Ms. Hubbard in the fact that I would feel uncomfortable with there being a parade. Cause I, I think like if the people clustered together, there's obviously going to be an increase in cases. And you can't like trust that many, I mean, there's some people, I mean, there might be some people that don't wear masks because they're probably in a group and that could cause an increase in cases. And like Alex said, people might gather afterwards. So I would feel uncomfortable with having a parade if it's going to like lead to some increases in cases and harm other people. And I like how Ms. Hubbard talked about how like in the past, we haven't like approved of like Apple Days or other festivities when there was less cases. So it kind of contradicts us to do it now.
Thank you, Bella. Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Good evening.
First of all, I want to say that Alex and Bella, you are wonderful participants.
Hello.
Um, you're articulate and I appreciate what you think about what you're going to say and I appreciate that. Last meeting, I was leaning towards saying, well, you know, we've taken so much away, as Julie said, and she's probably one of the most compassionate people I know. And I agree. But then when I got the memo today and I got to hearing some of the things that are said about the numbers in our area, I can't go with that. So I'm not in favor of doing it at all. If I, if you're angry with me because I took a parade away, well, maybe you won't be so angry if I save your, your family or somebody, your neighbor or somebody from going through COVID. So I'm not in favor of doing it.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I, um, I think there was certainly enough discussion on both sides at the last meeting to put this, to bring, to ask the applicants to bring this forward. I'm concerned about the number of cases. I do like the expanded route that they've proposed. I appreciate Zach's comment about the gymnastics and moving barricades and such around, but I think at this time, when so many people are trying to stay separated and the fact that we just can't predict the number of people this would draw, I think we need to, I think we need to say, you know, let's do it next year. So that's kind of my feeling. Is there anybody that, that wants to speak again on this topic or can I ask Ms. Jones to call the vote? Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Griffin and a second by Knight, if I have it written down, right? To approve the Dexter Lighted Parade. Ms. Jones, you could call the vote, please?
Yes. Hubbard?
Wa, can you hear us?
Yeah, you, can you not hear me?
No, we need a vote.
No, we didn't hear an answer.
Oh, I said no, sorry.
Thank you. Cousins?
No.
Fisher?
No.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle?
No.
Knight?
Yes.
Keough?
No. Okay, so if I got that right, I think it, it failed five to two. And I
Yes.
Appreciative of the thought and discussion that everybody put in this. This is not one of those easy things for anybody. So we'll have to report back to the applicants on the reasons why, you know, we chose not to, not to approve that this year. New business item E, I almost said L, because I'm so used to that, E2 is a consideration of adoption of the social district management and maintenance plans and funding for the district in an amount not to exceed 7,500. If I could get a motion from somebody in a second, then we can have proper discussion. I would appreciate it, please.
Michelle's, I'll move, move to approve the Dexter Social District Management and Maintenance Plans is included in this packet. Direct staff to submit an application to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission and implement the, the plans upon receipt of a permit from the MLCC and approve amount not to exceed 7,500 for costs associated with social district.
Okay, thanks Zach. So that's essentially the motion on page seven of our packet, correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is that Donna?
Yes.
Okay, Donna Fisher's second. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Does any council member have a question? On anything? Do we want staff or do we want to hear from staff at this time? I, I have one comment I'd like to make at some point, but I'm willing to go second if somebody else has another comment. Um, all right, I'll jump, I'll just jump in and let everybody know. I, I had a conversation with our fire chief today and Zach, if it's okay, and Donna as a secondor, would like to make sure that we include some type of language in, in the management plan that mentions the necessity to get with the other departments that might need to review any of the things we're doing, like putting up with the structures. And what I mean by all the other departments, the sheriff, the fire department, the building department, maybe the county health department, if appropriate. I think we want our management plan to reflect that we're getting input from the other departments and with regard to safety and those types of things. Uh, so just a thought, I'll throw that out there. I'll let Michelle go next. And if it makes sense after she talks to add something like that, we can maybe the motioner and secondor can accept a friendly amendment to that effect. Michelle?
John, can you just tell me, you mentioned sheriff, building department, county health.
And fire department.
Fire?
Yep.
Thank you.
Paul, just to make sure that we're, you know, we're.
I got it. I just wanted to make sure I had them down. That's all.
Yeah, they, they all, they all potentially can have a different, a different angle on this. You know, there's discussion of the tents. That's certainly the building department and the fire department have some input there with respect to how those are set up. I think there's some guidelines that they've already been working on with the previous tents that have been in town, but we want to make sure that we as the city or the DDA, whoever it is that's formerly going forward with those actions that we get, you know, get their input. Uh, we probably need to make sure we've talked to the sheriff about the whole concept of people walking around with closed containers. That's sort of contrary to, you know, what we're used to. We just want to make sure we cover all the appropriate bases, is I guess what I'm thinking.
Gotcha. I just want to make sure I had all four of them. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Michelle, I'll, I'll let you jump in, please.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, council. Excuse me. Adding the language that Sean had identified and, and that Justin had provided to you is, there's no problem with that and that would make sense. The, the agencies, we would coordinate with them regularly. We would coordinate with them on the tent. There won't be other tents. It's only the one. And it would be like Sean said, put up by the DDA, well, financed by the DDA, but put up by a company and we'd go through a whole permitting process, just like we would to close the road, parking lot. We have to get council's approval for that as well. There is another amendment to the motion, if I could. And that would be that the applications from Dexter's Pub, Beer Grotto, Aubrey's of Dexter, and Erratic Ales for a social district permit are recommended by this body for consideration for approval by the liquor control, Michigan Liquor Control Commission. That language I'm asking to be added because they're going to have to submit their application. And with their application, there has to be something that, that is signed by the city and demonstrates that you are okay with this. If we don't do this as part of everything we're doing tonight, we'll have to come, we'll have to wait until December 14th at your next meeting.
Okay, that, that makes complete sense to me, Michelle. I'm, I'm certainly good with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Same with me. A second, that's fine.
As far, I'm sorry.
No, no, keep, keep going. Florence, still yours, Michelle. And then Jamie's up next. She has her hand up next. So, Michelle, Florence, still yours.
If she's got a question, why don't I wait to hear what her question may be?
Okay, Jamie? Are you ready?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I guess, yeah, I was going to share some thoughts. Maybe a clarifying question, just so, so I understand this right, because I have been watching this sort of from a distance. The intent is that, so I see that I'm looking at the, the map. There's the red shaded area and then the purple commons area. The thinking is that people from the establishments that are not immediately adjacent, like so Dexter's Pub and Erratic Ales. The, the benefit to, or the thinking is that people would get a beverage from them and walk to the purple area to consume and they would have to stay in the red as they were walking.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, okay. I have additional thoughts, but let Michelle finish her.
It's, this is, it is a creative way to find a way to include the potentially eligible businesses within our downtown. In a way that follows the rules that Liquor Control Commission has established. You have to have at least two contiguous businesses to the common, to establish a commons area. You can establish the social district itself in, in any configuration, but the commons area must be contiguous to two businesses. The only two businesses we have that can be contiguous without crossing a street are Beer Grotto and Aubrey's. It, that's just, that's just the reality of the geography of our downtown. One of the things that I have talked about with the businesses, we held a Zoom meeting last Monday, Tuesday. I, the days are all running together, so please forgive me. And one of the things we talked about is there's going to be rules posted, large signs, as you saw in your packet, throughout the district. That's a given, as well as in the commons area, at the different businesses and in the tent. One of the additional things that that I recommended to the businesses is we can take those rules and, and, and bring them down into a smaller large postcard size, if you will, that can be literally put, placed on the different tables within the tent, within the social district. It can also be distributed at different businesses throughout the downtown. And on the back of that, you could have directions and QR codes so that if people wanted to also order food so that they have something to eat while they're drinking, that's another way to connect those businesses that are a little bit farther out. The businesses all seem to find that a good suggestion. And they've all agreed to send me their logos, their QR codes. I think I actually have the ones from, from Beer Grotto already. So we are working on ways that we can include these businesses and, and cross market. Because we do recognize that it, it's, it's a playing field that doesn't appear to be level as we would like it.
Okay, let me go back to, thank you, Michelle. Appreciate your work on that. And the updates that you provided. For now, Jamie, did you have more comments to make?
Yeah, I guess, you know, with a caveat that again, council was discussing this before I officially joined on council. So I'm somewhat aware of previous conversations. I, you know, so coming sort of from outside in at this point, I took a step back. I remembered some comments Michelle had provided in a packet. I think it was in mid-October, October 19th in that packet, just raising the question of, you know, what's the need for this? Indicating how there was maybe some confusion about the, the existing outdoor service area that each of these businesses have. And recognizing that, oh, actually those permits allow outdoor seating year round at the existing outdoor space, but that snow removal was potentially an issue. Snow removal being an issue with Parklets and then potentially with the existing outdoor seating, but it seems like snow removal is still going to be an issue with these tents with the suggestion made last week that we would hire some outside contractor to come help with the snow removal. So again, given that I haven't been involved in depth in all the conversations that have taken place from my perspective, I don't know that I, and again, and I guess the second point that was made in that report in mid-October was just recognizing not surprisingly that this was not a budgeted expense for either the city nor the DDA, nor would you have expected it to be, because obviously nobody budgeted for COVID. But I guess, given how it's evolved, given how it looks like it might be implemented. But I guess, given how it's evolved, given how it looks like it might be implemented, I can understand why businesses might be supportive of it, particularly when the cost is coming from the DDA and from the city. I, and I think Mr. Cousins made this comment last week that it was starting to seem a little convoluted. So at this point, I would take a step back to the beginning to say, is this something we actually need? Yes, it's likely something that we could put together. Is there going to be a net benefit for the entire community? I imagine, you know, many businesses are struggling and not just those who serve alcohol and more than just businesses are struggling, resident, you know, residents are struggling too. So I would just want to make sure that this is something that would actually have a net positive economic impact. And I guess I don't see that here, but I know a lot of time has been spent on it. So you know, I'm, I think I'm on the side of, I'm not sure that I see a need for all of this, given that there's existing outdoor seating at each of these businesses.
Okay, I'll also with your comments. I've got, I think I saw Zach's hand and then we'll go to Wa.
Well, I'll let Wa go first because I have some changes to the motion coming out there.
Okay, Wa, Wa will go with you next, please, if you're ready.
Okay. I would, this is, I should know this, but the October 14, October 14th comments that council member Griffin was referencing, that was before restaurants had to shut down their indoor dining, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So while they have outdoor seating, I I would like to point out that I don't think that the number of people they can seat at their outdoor tables is nowhere near their normal winter indoor capacity. And so they, right now, have an indoor capacity. Yes, it's set to expire. We don't know if it's going to get extended. I'm not saying the plan on the table is something that I would support as is, but I support continuing this discussion. I do also think that this would have a net benefit to our community. We could, you know, who knows if if these businesses will survive the winter even with this. I hate to say that. I don't mean to be a pessimist, but there's a lot of economic stress on small businesses right now. With that said, I do agree that, you know, we could need to also look at supporting businesses that do not serve alcohol. So I want us to come out on the other side of COVID with just as vibrant as a downtown as we have now. And I think that doing anything we can, well, not anything, but coming up with a plan that makes sense is, I think it's imperative.
Thank you, Wa. Zach, come back to us, sir.
So I will throw these out there for amendments to the original motion there. The inclusion of the recommendation for permits as a community development manager recommended. And then on the management plan underneath the paragraph that says eligible licenses, which is page 10 of 30, include a paragraph titled other agencies that would read the Dexter Social District and Commons shall be operated in a manner consistent with the Dexter Area Fire Department, Washnott County Sheriff Department, Washnott County Building Department, and Washnott County Health Department. And I can come back to that because I was clever and wrote it down beforehand. And then on the maintenance plan, which is page 12 of 30, under restrooms, add a paragraph or add a sentence to the end of that paragraph that said that states, I wasn't clever to write this one down, but posting a notice on the portage on describing the sanitation levels. And by that, I mean, I've seen a lot of places and work at a place that says this bathroom is sanitized twice a day, or this restroom is sanitized once a day or once a week, so that folks are able to take appropriate action on there. And those are my recommendations for mending it. And I would also, I see we have one of the potential licensees on here tonight. And so I'd like to hear any comments that he might have on this whole discussion as well.
Okay. Wa, I see you have your hand back up.
Yeah, sorry. I just realized that Zach was going through those. On page 13 and 14 on the alcohol rules, unless I'm reading this wrong, I think there needs to be an apostrophe consume it in the district's commons area or district, that there's something needs to be tweaked there to make it grammatical.
Which page are we on, please?
13 and 14. Oh, of the, yeah, 13. Sorry, I'm looking at on my phone. It's the first bullet under alcohol rules.
So these alcohol rules are the ones that were written by Michigan Liquor Control Commission. So they've been taken right from from their criteria.
Okay, never mind.
Or perhaps a colon S I C?
Yeah. Right. I presume, I'm presuming here that to Wa's point, we probably can take the S off because we have one district with one commons area. So that's, it can be, it can be tweaked.
Thanks, Michelle.
Okay, so remind me, Carol, who made the motion and who seconded, please?
Michelle's made the motion, Fisher's seconded.
Okay, so I have it written down correctly. Okay, so Zach, you were making a friendly amendment to your own motion or proposing that. Donna, are you okay with Zach's additions?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is to approve approve the three items that were listed on page, it's the bottom of page seven, with the additional language related to the four departments as well as permission to grant approval to the four permites. And Zach, what was your last one? I didn't get it quite written down. It was on the last page.
Yep.
The restroom markings, right?
Yep, to post notice of the sanitation sanitizing schedule on the portage on.
Okay, sanitization schedule. Okay, I just want to make sure I had those additions correctly written. I am, is council okay if we, if Zach, you suggested that we listen to one of the business owners?
I am okay with that, but hold on a sec. I don't want the DPW to have to go out and put post these conditions in the portage Johns. If you get the company to do it, that's fine, but I don't want our staff to have to go out and see if they're hung there, see if they're correct. I don't want our staff to be doing that. They've got plenty extra stuff to do with this program. And I think that we need to make sure that the company accomplishes what Zach is asking for, or I'm not in favor of the motion with that in it.
So we do use John sanitation for our porta potties?
Yes.
And they do maintain the porta potties, including refilling with hand sanitizer and wipes and all of that.
Right. But the signage is what I'm talking about, Justin, so that you, you know, he wants it posted as to how often this, that, or the other happens. I don't want us to be involved in that.
But Justin, Justin, let me ask. Justin, do you think that that's something the Johns would take care of us for? Take care for us?
I would think so. I would have, I would want to ask and double check with them, but I would think so.
Okay.
I would think that they would be happy for the, for the winter business.
Okay, thank you. Jamie, your hands up again?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, make an additional point. It seems like we've, we've been very mindful of consistency and decisions as it relates to COVID. Again, I mean, and maybe this is going against the norm, and I apologize if it is. I would just say that it seems inconsistent to me to, I don't know the size of the commons area, so if somebody could clarify that after. Putting people together in a potentially confined-ish space while they're consuming alcohol, and yet nobody here is expressing concerns about transmission of COVID. To me, that seems like a more concerning activity and space than previous things we've talked about. Thank you.
Yes, so Jamie, before I call back on Donna's hands up as well, maybe that's from before, but Jamie, I expressed concerns about that when we talked about it beginning. I mean, this, this has the, the, you know, the ability to put people in close proximity to each other. However, at the same time, if there's one thing that I've observed, and I can't say that I've participated in very much, but observed is within the existing tent slash outdoor seating areas that we have had in town, people do seem to understand that scenario, that situation. They, 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 they understand how to wait. They understand how to be apart. And I'm anticipating that our setup would be similar to what we've observed take place over the last 30 days, if you will, or even longer, because before we had tents, they were outside, you know, in large numbers, especially, you know, down at the pub in the Riverside. But they do seem to understand how to maintain the distance in that setting for, as an observation for what it's worth. Michelle?
Yes, so Jamie, you bring up the irony in all of this, and it's a very good point that you make. And, and cities across the country, and definitely we are in this boat, are having to walk a very fine line between making decisions that can help a business in the, in these trying times without contributing to potential spreads of the virus. It's, you are, you all are in an enviable position because there's, like you've heard me say before, there is always an opportunity cost. When you, when you make a decision to go one way, it's going to be, have a cost someplace else. I guess if there's any consolation for us, the winter is not likely to bring out the masses of people together that, that something in the summertime would. That's why the outdoor service areas on the, on street parking seem to work well for us. But in the winter, those won't work for us. And so the social district becomes that alternative for those businesses. But you're right, it is a, it's a double edged sword. And how do you continue? The question is, how do you continue to support your business, businesses, promote your downtown and create it, continue it to be vibrant in this, in this pandemic atmosphere that we're in?
John, it's Paul here.
Okay, Paul.
Well, I, I, I agree with Jamie in that some of this is incongruous and that sticks out, obviously, but I think I see a difference between this light parade, which was an additional thing that was not going to affect anybody's income, their welfare. It was just a fun thing to do, and we do need fun things to do now. Similar to the people that run on the walk on the walks, they, that's their choice to go down there. And it's not necessarily that we're saying, you know, we're going to have an activity that's going to draw up additional people down there. It's just, it's, that's the way it is. Now, I had a restaurant for 18 years. And boy, I'm glad I don't now. I mean, I don't, I told my wife more than once, I don't know what we would do. Restaurants make it at a very small edge all the time. And so I guess I feel that under the rules that we established back in the fall, that was allowed us to do what we did. Now, I drove through town almost every night just to observe. And I agree with Sean that when I drove through town, people were wearing masks at the tables, or they were standing, waiting for tables, or they were seated there appropriately, distance apart. When they got up, they put their mask on and they walked away. I saw it at the beer grotto. I saw it at the pub at Aubries. I stopped sometimes and would walk through just to see how it was working. And it did work. I don't know if any of those people caught COVID or not. I can just tell you that it seemed to work. And those businesses were happy that they had people in their establishment. Tonight on TV, the people that own restaurants downtown Detroit are just deciding that it, no matter what the governor says after this expires on the 15th, that they're going to stay open. I think that's wrong. I think we have, we have come up with an answer that has been provided by the liquor commission to help solve part of their problem. This is not going to make them wealthy. This may let them survive. And so because of that, and because of rules that were established by the liquor commission, and what we've done to provide the safety for it, and we will do that as relates to the four different units of government that are going to look at it, whether it's the fire department or the health department or whoever. I'm going to support this because I think it's necessary. I don't know who's out there that's an owner, but I wish they would speak and let us know who they are and how they feel about it, and if they're in favor or not in favor of this thing. If not, if we don't find it's in favor for the businesses, then we won't do it. But from what I heard, they are all supportive of this activity. So I will support this and encourage my fellow council people to support it as well.
Sean, do you want them to unmute Phil Macus?
Yeah, hold on, Michelle. Let me just make sure that there aren't, somebody isn't waving, another councilor waving their hand somewhere. Yeah, Phil, I see that you're on. Justin, why don't you unmute Phil? Phil, is there anything you'd like to add to this while we deliberate a little bit?
I gotta be honest with you. After listening to the meeting tonight, I don't know what more I can add. Obviously, I'm in favor of it. You know, that seems like the question that people want to know from me. I don't know that I can add anything more after hearing this discussion.
Okay, well, thanks. Thanks for participating by listening tonight.
Sean, if I could just address Phil real quick. Phil, could you please let a council know what you and your staff talked about that you relayed to me last week?
I mean, we, from what I know, we've been working on this since the day that it was passed by the government, by the governor, whoever passed it. From what I know, our outdoor tent was cut short because this was going to be approved. And yet we're waiting till the night before, or I guess we only have our tent for a couple more hours as I'm sitting down here. And yet we're waiting till literally as much of the last minute to make a decision on this as we possibly can. Our staff bends over backwards, and I thank them every single day that they come in to enforce the rules that nobody wants to have enforced. And yet, at the same time, they expect adults to behave like adults. We have reached out to erratic ales to offer to put some of their beer on tap at our bar. My staff is more than willing to do anything that they can to help with the tent, because we've got four people whose livelihood depends on people actually coming into our business. And they're not allowed to do that right now. So I mean, from a financial standpoint, we pay as much tax as anybody in town as far as the type of a business. I mean, from a financial standpoint, we pay as much tax as anybody in town as far as the type of a business. I also live here in town, as does my mother, who is partner in the business. You know, to make a decision because you're not sure that an adult is going to behave like an adult, I mean, seems ridiculous to me, but that's a whole nother conversation. The, the point being is, our staff, the entrance is probably going to be 15, 20 feet away from one of our doors, maybe 30 feet, I don't know. Because I don't know where the entrance is going to be. But our staff is more than happy to continue to do in the tent that is right next to the building, rather than right in front of the building, the same things that they've been doing. Picking up after people, you know, we all go to restaurants, and not every adult that goes to a restaurant picks up after themselves when they drop something on the ground. So again, to make a decision because you're afraid of what an adult is going to do, well, I mean, I, I, I don't know the, the right words for that. But the point being is we would probably have to shut down if we don't have a tent. We have nowhere for business to happen. And yeah, we can, we, we are set up, I don't know if anybody's been into the grado lately, but we're set up to do to-go stuff, all that kind of thing. But it's not the same, it's not going to be the same, and I would venture that i- it's possible that more businesses will go out of business if there's not some sort of support to try to creatively help, I guess is the best way to put it. And if anybody has any questions that they'd like me to address, I'm more than happy.
Thanks, Phil. All right, let me catch up a little bit. Chief Smith? Justin, can you unmute Chief Smith, please, and then Jamie, come back to you?
Yeah, thank you, Sean. I don't know if this is the right time for me to speak, but I, I want to echo and jump on the bandwagon, Michelle started there. You guys are in such an unenviable position, and, and everything's all over the board out there. We'll bend over backwards and do what we can for these businesses, because they're, literally, they're lifelines in jeopardy right now. But I do want to point out that I, I do believe the plague was a different issue, because it wasn't involving people's livelihood. But this tent, this social tent, honestly, if you look at the number of people that are going to be able to go in there, it isn't anymore that's going to go in right next door to that hardware store. I mean, there's, there's other stores that are going to have more people in it, in and around Dexter than what this tent is, so I, I, you know, it's just my feeling that, that Dexter ought to bend over and do what they can for these businesses, and look at the reality of it is some people complain about this social tent, but they're the same people that'll go to Walmart and Myers and, and walk around without a mask on, or even go in the the Ace Hardware Store there, or, or any of the other stores in Dexter, and they'll go elbow to elbow without even thinking about it. So I, I think the right thing to do here, in my opinion only, and we'll support whatever the council does, but give these people a, a lifeline and, and approve the social tent, and let's work together on it. My thoughts only.
Thanks, Keith. Jamie, back to you.
Yeah, I appreciate Phil's comments and everybody else's comments. I just want to emphasize that I don't personally have concerns about spread of COVID, that isn't why I would vote against this. All those things in mind, I just wanted to, to point out to the inconsistency with previous decisions that were made as they related to other people's concerns about COVID. I would say my biggest, if, if this were something that was being fully funded by the DDA, and again, this is, as, as much or as little as I know about the current city budget and the DDA and the difference between those two, this was something that, that were completely coming out of the DDA's budget, I probably wouldn't have a concern about it. I think my question is this, the city's role financially outside of the DDA.
Hey, Michelle or Justin, can you, thanks, Jamie, can, can you remind me, did, did we split the cost of the barricades?
Yes, the city and the DDA split the cost of the barricades.
Yeah, so Jamie, just as background, the, the orange and white barricades that set up the original outdoor areas under the emergency orders that we passed, or emergency ordinances that we passed, the, the costs were shared. And I think that's sort of the what I call it, the initial concept that is being carried through a little bit with this request is the DDA had a chance to meet two Thursdays ago, and, you know, offered up, sort of pulled the number out of the air based upon some, some numbers that were provided initially, or estimates provided initially, and we've had a little bit of chance to look at it, and I think that the, the proposed number from the council is meant to help, you know, share in that cost, that, that effort. So it's, it's been, it's been a dual. It's been done for both groups together all summer long, I guess, or since June when we put the first thing in place, if I could say it that way, just as a point of information.
Thanks.
Okay, well, we, we've got a motion on the table from Michelle's, second by Fisher. Is there other thoughts or comments from folks? Okay, Ms. Ms. Jones, I'd like you to please call the vote. The motion was, again, to approve the motion on, suggested motion on page seven, I believe it was, or eight. And then with the addition of the language showing cooperation with the fire department, police department, Washtenaw County Department of Health and Human Services, and the building department, Washtenaw County Building Department, the approval of the permit language for the five potential users that would have to apply, the businesses that would have to apply along with us, or shortly after we reply, and then the display of the additional sanitization. There's sanitation, sorry, I made up a word, I think, sanitation rules on the port of John from John Sanitation.
Okay, Griffin?
No.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Okay, so we have a motion that carries.
Is that six, one, Sean? I didn't hear everybody.
Yeah, there were a couple faint, but there's, I heard six yeses, Paul, and one no, so yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Yep, thank you, everyone, for thoughts on that. Okay, new business item E3 is discussion of city council organizational matters. This is an opportunity per our rules, so to speak, to organize and get organized to how we want to represent or have our council representatives beyond the various boards and commissions, committees that that we participate in. Some of those committees meet very infrequently, things like the finance committee, or even more recently, the utilities committees, streets committees, some of those things have not met very often, or only meet on an as needed basis when council needs them to meet, or a key staff member, like Marie Sherry, needs to have the finance group together for something. However, we do have representation on the more active boards, planning commission, parks commission, zoning board of appeals. Those all meet regularly, the Dexter Fire Department allows us the opportunity for two representatives. We are allowed to have a member on the chamber of commerce, we usually appoint a regular and an alternate to that. The arts, culture, and heritage committee is a regular monthly meeting that we have a representative on. And when we redlined this, and I'd like to thank Jamie, Jamie submitted some grammatical corrections and some suggestions to this. So this, the redline that you have in front of you was put together by Justin with input from Jamie. We did redline. You know, we crossed out those spots where the former council members that are no longer with us, you know, were participating. Those do not have to be the only changes we make. If people have a desire to rotate out of something that they're currently in, or if they want to stay in a position that they're currently in, or if council thinks somebody's really effective in a position, whatever the reason might be, this is our opportunity to, to discuss those and, and go through it. Up until let's see, I, I, in, in, you know, in past years, I've, I've tried to meet with everybody ahead of time, tried to find out what your area of interest is. I didn't do that this year. I did have three of you reach out to me. Wa and Jamie both reached out and expressed an interest in the planning commission opening, among others. Donna Fisher expressed an interest to stay on arts, culture, and heritage. I wanted to just report that out. You know, I, I'd like to hear, but this is, this is our meeting, it's, it's, it's where your interests lie, and how do we best serve and represent together? So I don't know what the, the easiest way to go through is, you know, the, if you start on, on the second page of the packet, there's a little bit of red, redlining, they, they took the names off of the bank signatories and left them, they wanted to have them more specifically just be the titles or the roles that would be applied there, is that correct, Justin?
That's correct.
So whoever, whoever it is that's in those roles would automatically, you know, have the approval to, to be the bank signatories. Our current mayor pro tem is Paul Cousins. We also, under this process, we list the attorneys and consultants and folks that we use for everyday services as our professional staff. Those are listed on page one, there's no I think change, so to say, or substantive change, other than the name to Smith Group, JJR, and the, the naming of the, of the traffic and ordinance enforcement matters. Does anybody have a problem or a question on page one? Let me just start there, that first page that it's, I guess in the, in the packet, it's page 16 of the packet. Alex, yes, sir?
I have a question on the bank signatories. So since we removed the names, it says, on the very last part, it says assistant to the city manager slash city clerk. I know Mr. Brier previously held that role, but does it make sense to separate those positions in case the person who holds those roles is not the same person in the future? So read assistant to the city manager, come on, and city clerk.
Potentially. I, I think, I think it'll depend on how, how full-time staff lays out after, after a permanent city manager is selected. And, and how we feel best to, will, will most make sense to, to fill that role going forward.
Yeah, tho- those are the titles that we have right now, so let, let, I would like to just keep that, that way if it's okay, and if we have to make that subtle adjustment, I think, I think that's noted, Alex, it's a good point. Marie, your hand is up?
I think it's reasonable just to put clerk on there and take assistant to the city manager off, because the reason we had the assistant on there to start with is because back when we were a village, we didn't have a clerk.
You don't want the assistant? Okay.
I mean, we can if you want, it's just if, if there's any questions, there's, I mean, you have three signers.
I guess, I guess, I guess my, my thought on this is that that part isn't broken.
True.
I mean, the, the idea was to not make it personal to the name, but to the role, and if the roles change, then I think we update it. But until they change, I think I would just leave it with the current titles that we have, would be my.
Paul, this is Paul, please. I would be more than honored to serve as pro tem again. I think I attend 99.9% of the meetings and try to. So when Sean does have to miss for business or for family issues, I've been able to fill in for that and be glad to do it again if, if the council feels that appropriate. I do have some, some concern about OHM. I know that in the construction of, of the sidewalks here on Dexter, on Forest Street, and some of the other work, that there was some issues. And I'm just not sure that they watch our pockets as much as we think, that I think we should have them watched. I know the issue down here on the, at the edge, they had to rework the the storm drains there, and to provide people a place for them to put their trash out and leaves, and be able to back out and safely and do all those types of things. I don't know what the number was, but I heard it was, it was an excessive $20,000. I know that they had to come back in and bring other people in to work the the drain areas that were coming down and put new sod and grass, or the things that were necessary to solve that problem, and that was done at some cost, I don't know who paid for that, or didn't pay for it, but it wasn't watched over to see that it was done correctly, in my opinion. And so I have some concerns about that. I could do some other issues, but I think I'll just say what I believe now, that I think it's time that we bid it out, that they, they have just because they've done it and done it for years, doesn't mean that we should continue to use them. And so for that, I would have some consideration of that. As far as the other issues there, that my name is listed, I will be glad to serve on committees that I've been listed on, and that's the 5H, the chamber commerce, that's improving. Still got a ways to go, but it's improving. I'm still there on the watershed council, and be happy to do that for a number of years. Sidewalk Street and Alley Committee as well, and on the wave board, which is, I really do enjoy working with that group and with our new director, Julia Roberts, has really been a great addition already for that, and a lot of good things I think will come out of that area there. So I would be glad to have, to serve on those committees. Again, and Sean, thanks for past asking me to do those, I'll be glad to do it again.
Yeah, you're, you're welcome, Paul. Appreciate you going first. Okay, why don't I run through, Donna, you have your hand up, I'll just let everybody go through and maybe state what they're interested in slash you know, what, how they feel about different things, and then we can just carry the discussion from there, if that's okay. Paul, you got one more comment?
Yeah, one more. I, I just want to let you know that my wife would be more than happy to be on the library board again. She is the treasurer, and she goes down every two weeks to sign the checks. They bring the checks in 48 hours ahead of time, they sanitize the room. She walks in a side door, signs her checks, walks out the side door, and nobody ever, she didn't see anybody, so they're very conscious of past health with her cancer and and her age as well. We don't want to talk about that, but anyway, everything else is fine, and she's happy to do it again. And she participates in all the board meetings by Zoom.
Okay, fair enough, thank you. Donna Fisher?
Yes, I originally put my hand up to respond to the comments about OHM. For several years now, I've had the luxury of being able, having a high level of confidence in Dan, and I trust that he will guide us, and, and I don't want to make any changes without having a serious conversation with him. As far as the other positions, I, I'm happy to be where I am. However, if somebody out there is dying to try what I do, I would be willing to switch maybe or probably. Anything else?
Okay, okay, Donna, so currently, Donna, you're, you're on the 3045 broad, everybody can read this, you're the alternate for the chamber.
Yep.
Currently, you're on the economic preparedness election commission, which is a smaller committee. I don't believe we need to have the faith in action Avalon Housing Committee anymore, unless somebody else feels that, that committee really only met
I don't think we needed.
Way, way back prior to the purchase agreement, so hasn't met in two years, but, or roughly two years. Donna, you're on the housing task force. Just want to make sure I'm mentioning where, and then down on the website committee, I had you down here as well, so you're okay being in those positions unless somebody else would like to do them, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
Okay. Wa, can I call on you to go next? Does that be okay?
Sure.
Sure. Um, well, as you mentioned, um, I'm interested in the planning, um, commission. Been interested in that for quite a while. Um, in fact, I was thinking, you know, if I didn't get elected, that I was going to wait for a citizen spot to open up there and, um, apply for that. So that's definitely where my, uh, main interest lies. That said, I'm happy to serve wherever I'm needed. Um, and that's, I guess about all.
Dawn.
Yeah, Donna.
I just, just, I just have to respond to what you're saying, Wa. Um, a few years back, I encouraged her to please run for office. You're the kind of person that we need to have. And so I'm hoping you'll think about that. And she told me, she said, oh, well, I've got my eye on the planning commission. I want to try that. So it has been, I know for sure, your desire for some time now. That's all.
Thank you. Wa, is there anything else that you see on here that, that you might be interested in?
I mean, I, like I said, I, I'm happy to serve anywhere, but you know, I, I'm, I'm interested in parks. I do like the outdoors. Uh, you know, I'm not going to fight Donna for ACH, but if I ended up there again, I wouldn't be upset. I mean, really, I, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in, in all of it. I want to learn as much as I can. And I just feel that the planning commission, um, is somewhere where I can maybe learn the most where I don't already know things. And, um, I, I think that would help me out, strengthen me as an overall council member.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Jamie, how about, uh, you next, if you would please?
Right, right. Yeah. I guess, yeah. When I was looking at this list, I was looking at sort of the, the big ones, the heavy hitters. What I see as heavy hitters, DFT, um, DFD, um, Parks and Rec and Planning Commission. Um, I, I can't say I feel as strongly about Wa, about the planning commission. So I'm happy to, um, defer to her on that one, although, you know, I, I have some interested in that. And I'm, you know, there's no reason, you don't have to be on the commission to pay attention to what they're doing, obviously, or attend their meetings. Parks and Rec is actually the first thing that came to my mind, um, as somebody who hasn't been really on any other city committee before being on council. Um, uh, seemed like a, a good place to start, uh, having young kids frequenting the parks, I guess. I guess I have that perspective. Um, so at this point, I think, yeah, I would say Parks and Rec stands out to me. Um, but again, if there are other holes that need to be filled in, um, I don't know if Zach is looking to come off of ZBA or not. Um, I think that's another one that could give somebody an opportunity in sort of that space. Um, that doesn't meet as frequently as the planning commission. Um, but again, I guess I'd be interested to see what other holes open up, you know? And I was also paying attention to where there were gaps with people who left. Um, so I'd be happy to fill Scott's position, uh, in Parks and Rec, I guess.
Okay, great.
Paul, can you, I didn't hear Jamie once you said, did you say that you may be interested in the DAFD, the Dexter Fire Board?
I said, that's something that stuck out at me. I'm, oh, yeah, I'm hesitant a little bit because of the, the time commitment.
Gotcha.
And Sean, can I ask a question about the website committee?
Sure, Paul.
Jim, Jim's, uh, was on that, but, uh, uh, now that we've kind of reworked that and there is there a need that we have three people on there or can two with the staff, the way the staff works, can that be done or am I just, am I, am I just blowing smoke here and don't know what I'm talking about?
Paul, that's, that's one of those committees that frankly hasn't met in a long time. Our staff do a great job administering the website. Um, you know, that, that could probably be fine with two members. And if somebody else wants to be on it, you know, instead of me, I, I'd be happy to let them take a spot there or, or there's certainly room for a third. We, but we don't feel like, we don't have to have three for all of these, just because we had three before. It's, you know.
Thank you. I, I, it was just a question. I didn't know where we were.
Yeah, it, it, it met quite a bit during, um, during the website revamp.
Yep.
But basically since then, there really hasn't been a need for the committee to meet.
Okay.
intact, Justin, because we had thought about writing some policies. And Marie was overwhelmed, but we did talk about when, when the time came that we would, the committee would remain intact because, and she would lead. So that's what I think I remember. Marie, am I crazy?
Yeah, you, Marie.
You are not crazy, Donna, and I am constantly overwhelmed at this point.
Gotcha. Yeah, but we can wait.
Let me go with Zach next, and then Julie, if you don't mind, you follow Zach.
Yeah. All right. Um, let's, let's see. Cap Dart, I'm fine with staying on. Um, and I'd also recommend that we could even do an alternate there. Uh, now the alternates, a lot of communities have alternates to that group. Um, oftentimes they'll even come, but we only get one vote as a community, although we don't really vote on anything substantive. Um, economic preparedness, I'm okay with. Um, I've been kicking the murder hornets nest a lot on fire department stuff. So I suppose I'd probably earned, um, having to go to that if, if, um, folks aren't interested in doing all that extra time and it, it falls in my schedule there nicely. Um, I would be okay coming off of zoning board of appeals. Um, if one of the new members want to go on to it, it's a real good way to learn the nuts and bolts of how the zoning is working and not working. Um, so I would be okay with that. The other ones that I'm on, I'm, I'm fine. Um, so that's what I've got.
Okay. Thanks, Zach. I want to say you, you've done a nice job on the ZBA.
Well, Julie. And our ZBA and our planning commission do have lots of really good folks on there. Um, if, if we were wobbly at all, I probably want to stay on there more just because I have the background in it, but they're, they're pretty good folks, um, in addition to the staff leadership.
Gotcha. Thank you for those comments. Julie, how are you?
I'm good. What's left?
Well, we, we need a, we need a streets committee member for one. You're, you're currently our representative to Dexter days. Do you, um, do you have an interest in ZBA?
Uh, no, I'll be perfectly honest, no.
That's fair.
I actually was going to say, I would be willing to step back onto the parks committee, but it sounds like we have other people interested in that already. So.
But Julie, like, like I could, I could, I could, we could use a street sidewalk alley person.
Okay, I can be an alley gal.
If you could help us there.
I just love the way you said that. I'm sorry. I just, it just brought a smile to my face. Thank you.
I'm not going to say a word.
Are, are, um, is everybody good with, um, Zach doing the second DAFD, uh, position?
I, I like it.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
Okay, great.
Makes sense.
I think our biggest, biggest one that there is on the, on the planning commission, which one, Jamie or Wa?
I, I was. To defer to Wa.
All right.
Okay. I, yeah, okay. So Jamie, you'd do parks and Wa would do planning?
That's fine with me.
I think, well, and I, I, I talked to, um, um, Jamie today and, and Wa in the past, and they both asked kind of how this meeting went. You know, we, we put this in place after each election. Uh, but you know, if somebody gets started on this and it, it doesn't work out for some reason, or they don't like it, or decide they can't meet on that day because of schedule change or whatever. You know, this council has the ability to revisit this. Uh, you know, I, I wouldn't want to revisit it every couple of months. But if, you know, if a year from now, there was a logical reason to shift something around out of necessity or, or whatever the reason might be, you know, I'm not against having that conversation. So I'm, I'm appreciative of the cooperation of everybody through this, you know, through this initial conversation. I think it's real important because, you know, we have a planning commission meeting that's going to come up next Monday. And you know, I think it's part of our, our duty to have a representative on that board. The, I, I'd like to ask, is anybody interested in being the SEMCO rep?
There is a staff alternative and that's, that's me. So.
How often do they meet?
They have, um,
quarterly meetings?
Twice a year.
Yeah.
Um, and little um, events on and off. Everything's being held by Zoom currently. So, but it's not, it's not, um, it's not an overwhelming number of meetings, Zach. And I always send you guys information when, um, when they have the meetings.
Yeah, they, they blast me with the emails every day at least. I went, went and did that one as well.
Zach, you're okay? I, I'd appreciate it actually if somebody would take that off my plate.
Sure.
I was on, I used to ride back and forth with the Silo Township supervisor all the time and save gas and enjoyed this riding out of Detroit.
All right. So let me just go over what I've got sort of penned in here. We've got,
Dawn, can I just ask one question of Julie?
Sure.
Julie, I, have you ever thought about fireboard? You have had.
I actually sat on the fireboard for Dexter Township for a number of years. So, yeah, it's very intense.
Okay, okay. Well, I just was wondering about that.
Well, thank you.
Okay. What I've got sort of penned in here, or if, if you will, is, uh, cousins to stay at pro tem on page sixteen. On page seventeen, um, we, we still need an alternate for cap dart. Maybe that could be Julie. I don't know.
I'll do that. Put my name in there.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, got Zach to take James, Jim Smith's place on fireboard with me. Uh, moving down, um, I didn't hear any objection to getting rid of the, uh, FIA Avalon committee. Um, down under parks, we'd add Jamie Griffin. Under planning, we'd add Wa Hubbard. Um, we, we moved Justin in to take Courtney's role in the regional resource management authority. SEMCO would become Zach. Um, street sidewalk, we'd add Julie to go along with Paul and Zach. Uh, should that committee need to meet, um, down under the Watts technical and policy, we switched Dan in for Courtney as on the technical rep. Uh, usually our engineer attends with us so they can help provide input there too. And then website, unless somebody wants to be there, we're just going to go with two. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And so, okay. The ones that I've added.
I'm sorry, Zach, I didn't catch that.
Someone should probably take ZBA for me with the, the.
Yeah.
Jamie said she worked.
Yeah, I have to take ZBA.
Okay, Jamie, you want to do ZBA? Okay.
I'd also point out, uh, thirty forty-five broad redevelopment. We have Chet Hill as the citizen rep. And he's been recently appointed to the planning commission. So, um, we'll need to get someone else for the citizen rep spot.
Yeah, I, I agree. Okay. We'll, we'll look to make that change. Uh, we'll, we'll show it as a vacancy for now.
Uh, Sean?
Yes.
Yep, Dart. I need some, to know a little more about what they're doing in terms of their structure. When I used to go to that, it was just a group of people that got together because they were happy to see one another and they chatted about bit by bit about what was going on in their community. Now, how, now we have an assigned rep and alternate. What did they do to change, Zach, that makes this different than when we used to call, everybody could go. We didn't have a designated rep.
Oh, yep. Anyone can come currently, as long as we don't get over a quorum. And we do, we didn't have, uh, something similar. It's, it's about communicating cross borders. So we, we do generally will have a round table of what's happening in your community. We have tried to do a couple of smaller region-wide projects. So six years ago, we had a transportation, um, kind of study that we did that identified projects throughout the region. We've also worked to prepare a couple of, um, open houses slash forums. So maybe three years ago, the housing forum that, uh, Representative Lizinski was at was kind of organized by Cap Dart, as was the transportation, um, summit, I forget what it's called, um, this past year. And we're trying to also do kind of educational stuff. So we've had folks from the Michigan rail office come out. We had, we're working on getting folks from the county who are going to be at our next meeting. Um, and.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Zach, for answering that. Uh, one of the other questions that has been proposed, um, as part of the introductory memo, is the idea of merging the Parks and Rec Commission and the Tree Board. Uh, there's, there's some overlap there. If you remember, our tree board has our, has a, has a parks rep serve on the tree board. Um, that person I believe is Joanne Wagner currently. Uh, the tree board is a very small board, um, consisting of three people and, and one staff liaison, I think. Is, is that correct, Justin? Oh, I lost Justin. He's, he's muted himself. That's well, anyway, that's what the, that's in the memo. I'm just reading from the memo. So how does, how does council feel about that, that suggestion?
I think it's, Paul, I think it's a good idea. I think it matches up perfectly.
Yeah, I, I, I'm okay with it as well.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, um, okay. Well, then we'll, we'll proceed with getting a, uh, we'll get an item for the December fourteenth meeting. I was, the, drowned a blank on the date. Sorry. I had to look at the bottom there, um, to, to make that official. Um, how do we want to handle the location? Not sure if there's a suggestion. We've been, we can meet virtually, you know, a little while longer, and then we're going to have to figure out what the next step is. Which I know is part of our next discussion item. So for, for now, I'm not quite sure what to fill in there on page eighteen of the packet.
Can we come back to that, Sean, after our discussion on the, on the other part?
Yeah, we, we, we can, Paul. If, if that makes sense, why don't we do that? Does that make sense? We'll move on to item four and then we can come back and consider based upon that discussion?
Yeah, they, they, they are both listed as discussion items. So, um, you could come back and make motions if, if you'd like to.
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to, if we could, counsel, um, get these in place. If everybody's comfortable with what we've discussed as a group. Again, just because, you know, next Monday is already going to be a planning commission meeting. And then before we know it, it'll be the second week and the third week and, you know, the time goes on. So our participation is important. Justin, do you want to lead us through the council rules?
Sure. Um, so, um, as was discussed the last item, we, um, went through and redlined, um, some changes. Um, and thank you to council member Griffin for your assistance with, um, finding some of these changes and, and making those. Um, but there were, Sean, do, do you want to go back real quick and talk about, um, the Parks and Rec and Tree Board real quick?
Did you miss that? No, we, just, just, we, we did. We, we are, we're okay merging them and we're going to bring back, we're going to ask you to bring back the item on the fourteenth.
Okay. Yes. So, so sorry, I had to step away for, for.
I thought you might've had to. We saw you on mute. So, yeah, we, we, so we covered that. Everybody's supportive of merging that. Seems to be logical merge.
Okay.
So if you could put that as an item for the fourteenth, we'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. All right. So, um, to start off, um, I wanted to start with a discussion of the open meetings act. And, um, I talked with Scott Munz, our city attorney, and, um, he might be able to help me out with this. But, um, we, on December twenty-sixth, adopted a, uh, virtual meeting policy. And as a part of that, we identified the reasons why we might be able to meet virtually. And as a part of that, we identified the reasons why we might be able to meet virtually, or as individuals be able to participate virtually. And one of those items, uh, included, uh, quote unquote, "medical condition." And I wanted to first start off with, with, uh, council's thoughts on when we do end up going back to meeting in person, what does that look like? Um, since our policy stipulates that, you know, one reason why someone might be able to be absent is a medical condition, do we want to define what that means? And/or do we require those who are able to physically meet in person, meet in person? So, does, does a medical condition mean a pre-existing condition? Or does it mean, uh, an illness which physically prevents you from attending a meeting?
And, and we, you, you, you feel like we have, we can define it either way, Justin?
Um, I, I, I think that we, yeah, I think by updating our virtual meeting policy, um, which based on the discussion tonight, I, I would bring back, um, we, we could define it either way. Um, the state legislature in their Open Meetings Act update, um, the, the state law that, that updated that, um, they didn't provide a lot of direction on what that meant. So if City Council wanted to say, um, we expect everyone on, on a border committee to meet in person unless there is a medical condition that is absolutely preventing you from attending, I think that would be a reasonable interpretation.
Um. Justin, can I interrupt for a quick sec?
Sure.
So, so in your memo, you use the phrase in the second sentence, you say individuals may attend virtually if there is a medical emergency.
Right, and.
And is, is, is that the same as medical condition?
That, tha- that is, the, the language that I used in the memo is, is incorrect. It, it should be medical condition.
Okay.
Not, not medical emergency.
All right, fair enough.
Well.
Well, i- is there, Justin, is, if, can we, can we do it both?
So, we, 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 based on the way the state law is written, we could have, uh, a quorum meet in person and then have people meet virtually, a- and I, I, I would think we may even be able to have a quorum attending virtually based on, on the way the, the law is written.
I guess my point is, my point, and then I'll, I see Zach's got his hand up, uh, my point is, could we define medical condition as pre-existing and/or you know, daily illness or more, you know, one time, not feeling well on the spot or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
As long as the word "emergency" is not what we're defining as "condition," I don't see why we couldn't do both, but Zach, do you have thoughts?
Yep, so just a fun anecdote, as I was watching or following the state legislature on this, one of the reasons this language got thrown in is because one of the fellows said he didn't want someone breaking their leg and being able to participate in a meeting from the hospital. Um, so, I guess it was a very specific issue he had. I, I personally would favor the broadest interpretation, application of this as possible. Um, I don't want to force folks who aren't comfortable coming out in public to have to come out in public to participate. I believe, uh, at this point, we've all gotten decent with, with Zooming, and so the broadest application allows the greatest participation of council, committee, commission members, um, is the best, in my opinion.
Well said. Other thoughts on, by council?
I agree. I think Scott had a, had a.
Can Scott give us any thoughts on or any direction?
So, I just, yeah, I wanted to make two comments. The first is somewhat semantic and esoteric, uh, but I just want to mention it for purposes of, um, discussion. In the statute itself, it defines what a medical condition is, but the definition is not much more useful. But it's defined as an illness, an injury, a disability, or a health-related condition. So just as far as your discussion goes, um, all, all of what you said really would apply to the, the phrase "health-related condition." Um, so that's, you know, that's the kind of esoteric comment. The other comment to go to, um, Ms. Fisher's question, there really hasn't yet been much in the way of meaningful guidance, um, on what, that I've seen, on what the medical condition um, really entails or is, is, um, encompasses. So I'm, my, my kind of thought is that as long as the council, um, is comfortable and, you know, advances to a decision that, um, has some thought behind it, that would be sufficient um, for your own purposes on when people can and cannot, um, attend via Zoom. It's, it's kind of unfortunate, the, prior to this latest amendment, um, the Michigan Court of Appeals and the Attorney General's, uh, office had been, um, fairly, um, flexible in when you could attend remotely. Um, this was all pre-COVID, and generally, of course, meetings were held in, in live settings. Um, and so unfortunately, the latest, this amendment to the Open Meetings Act really narrows, um, in the legislature's viewpoint when people are, um, kind of permitted to attend remotely, you know, based on this medical condition, military duty, or statewide, um, or local state of emergency. So the, the amendments really did kind of narrow what the, the thought process had been prior to COVID. So, in any event, um, again, uh, the language is, you know, if the city council decides what qualifies as a health-related condition, then, you know, that would be applied by each of the city council members or other board members for their respective bodies.
Okay, thank you. So you, you think everything we've said is consistent with the current definition?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Jamie, I see. Thank you, Scott, for attending and helping us tonight. Jamie, I see you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. So, because I think the two, those two sentences could be like read as where the second one is sort of, um, clear, uh, expounding upon the first, or it's, it's, I just want to make sure I understand. So, this, the statement, "Individuals may attend virtually if there is a medical condition or if they are called to military duty," that is regardless of whether or not there's a state or local emergency.
Correct.
So that's at any time, somebody's having some medical condition. Um, okay. Yeah. I mean, yeah, I mean, I guess you could have a case where somebody is never physically at a meeting because they have a pre-existing condition, and they always cite that as a reason not to be physically present. But I guess, you know, we're talking about this in time of a pandemic, so I know why people are trying to be mindful of people with pre-existing conditions, and you don't forcing or not forcing them to come be at a meeting in person. Um, I guess if this were not a pandemic time, I think it's an interesting, um, question whether or not people should ever have to come in person to these meetings. But, you know, I'm not making these rules, so if we're just trying to be in line with existing, um, laws, you know, then I think we should be as vague or as specific as those laws were written initially.
Okay, so it sounds like we've got a pretty general take on what medical condition is, and that, does anybody object to keeping it broad in general? I think everybody's looking for the flexibility at this point in time, so it doesn't mean we couldn't always revisit the policy or whatever. So, okay, the, we're past that point. I see Michelle has her hand up. Sorry, I just noticed, Michelle.
So, this was a question pre-COVID that the Planning Commission actually brought up and asked for, um, excuse me, city attorney, um, opinion on. Um, and at that time, um, we, we, um, consulted with Dykema. Uh, no, no offense, Scott, you were busy with other stuff for the city. Um, and so, um, the thing that, um, was pointed out to us at that point was that, at that time, and this would have been roughly about a year ago, um, that the Open Meetings Act only allowed for, um, someone to, to attend remotely if they were, um, uh, in, in military service or on military duty. Um, that's consistent with the amendment that's, that was currently done, but I did, um, participate, uh, in an MML, um, webinar shortly after all of this came out. One of the things that they very clearly, um, told us based on questions regarding, um, medical condition, pre-existing conditions alone are not sufficient to, um, uh, to be used for attending remotely. If you are suffering, um, uh, but in other words, if you're under the weather because of that condition, that is acceptable to attend remotely. So I have asthma, but if I'm having a really hard time breathing, um, um, and I'm doing a lot of coughing, attending remotely would be acceptable, but I couldn't just not come to a meeting and always attend remotely just because I have a condition. Does that help?
I'm not sure.
I did email my boards and commissions with that when it came out.
Scott, does that? I'm not, to me, that sounded different than what I heard Scott say, but.
Yeah, I mean, uh, not to, not to be, um, disagreeable, but, um, uh, I haven't seen anything that would, that, I haven't seen any particular guidance on what the, the medical condition terms are. Now, that doesn't mean that, um, MML hasn't put something out that I haven't seen. Um, you know, um, the language in the statute is vague. Um, it just says, you know, if you've got a medical condition, and then they define it. Um, so, you know, um, I guess, from where I sit, um, I think you, the council can, you know, define it as broadly as you choose. Um, and I, you know, if you had, I mean, I would, I would consider, you know, the bottom line, there's language in the statute about, uh, if the medical condition would risk the personal health or safety of members of the public or the public body if the meeting were held in person. So, um, the language relates to, you know, the personal health or safety, uh, of the, the public that might be attending or the other members of the public body. Um, you know, you could say, you could take a restrictive, uh, viewpoint and say, if you've got a pre-existing condition that makes you susceptible to getting COVID, you're not the threat to, um, the safety and the public body at that particular meeting. Um, however, you might then be at risk. Um, I mean, if you took the, I, I, I just personally, I just am, again, based on the lack of any clear guidance that I've seen, I don't think it would be prohibited by the council to take a more, um, uh, vague or relaxed approach to that. Uh, because I guess, you know, as, as, uh, Councilmember Michelle said, um, you know, you don't want people not attend, you don't want people that might get sick coming to the meetings when they could attend by Zoom. So, um, that, that's from what, from where I sit, um, I think it would be, it would be acceptable for the council to take a more, um, relaxed approach than the, perhaps the one that Michelle noted, although I guess we, you know, put the caveat on it. Uh, I haven't seen that particular guidance from MML, uh, but just based on the, the language of the statute, which I think is, uh, unhelpfully vague, uh, I don't think that whatever council adopts would be violate the terms of this, uh, of the statute.
Okay. Uh, I think, I think if it's okay still, everybody will, will, will keep it as broad or vague as we can, then. At this point, okay, Justin, keep going if you would please. You had some other questions there?
Yes, um, so, ki- kind of building on that, once we do, so I think we're all gonna be forced back into in-person meetings before everything is settled, whether we, we like it or not. Um, even with the caveat of, you know, folks with pre-existing conditions or, or, or broad language, um, allowing for folks to, to participate virtually. Um, when that happens, what do those meetings look like? Um, I think it's, it's a given that, you know, we would ask members of the audience and council to sit, uh, six feet apart. Um, are we requesting that council members take their temperature before coming? Um, are we expecting that, um, staff or council are going to be responsible for sanitizing and cleaning, um, when the meeting is over? Um, I just wanted to, to have a, have a, have a quick discussion on kind of what in, an in-person meeting would look like when we return.
Well, I could tell you, Justin, that, you know, I'm working from home every day. Uh, if I, for whatever reason, need something, a set of plans or something printed, and I have to go to the office, I have to do a temperature check before I am allowed to enter my own place of employment, so.
Somebody do that for you? Does somebody out there do it for you, Sean?
Paul, we're, we're, we are asked to do it at home one hour before we come into the office. And then we, we, and then we, we report that through a, an, an, an app that we've created, so it gets registered. But if, if you forget, and I did forget one time, I drove to Taylor and got there and had not taken my temperature. We have a thermometer at our front desk to take the temperature of people coming into the building, so I, I had to, to call, call them, call in and say, hey, could somebody meet me at the front door and take my temperature?
Okay, thank you.
But I think that's a pretty normal procedure.
Yeah.
So I would, I, I would be in favor of that. I think that, that's, I think that's one of the first indicators. I would be in favor of something like that, Justin.
I, I think Zach had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm not looking. Zach, go ahead. My apologies.
Uh, so I have worked, not currently because they're shut down, but at two places that have a lot of members of the public come into them. And, uh, one of them uses paper for tracking who's coming in, so we do the wellness check questions and the name and all that stuff. And the amount of paper that that creates is incredible. Uh, the other place uses the QR code for a, um, Google document check-in, so we have somewhere, if there is an outbreak, we can track down whoever is supposed to be in the building. Um, I'm, City Van Arbor has IT folks who set that up. Something like that is much easier than having everyone has to fill out that goes into a binder that stacks up and stacks up. Um, so that type of system, I would prefer to hard tracking.
Okay. Maybe, uh, Justin, you can think about what the options are there for that?
Sure. Um, I think I kind of, kind of the last part of that, like, when, when meetings are over, um, is each person going to sanitize their own area? Is staff gonna sanitize? Are we gonna hire somebody to sanitize? Um, there is a, a company that we've worked with, um, through our elections, who came in after, after the elections and, and sanitized, um, but there is a fairly substantial cost of that, and there would be fairly substantial cost of that, that, for multiple meetings.
I, I can, um, I can only offer again, if I use anything at my office, conference room table, copier, we are required to sanitize and help with that. You know, I, I would be perfectly willing if I was there to, uh, you know, once the meeting ended, put my mask on and assuming we could provide some sanitary wipes or whatever, wipe down, wipe down the areas. to, you know, once the meeting ended, put my mask on and assuming we could provide some sanitary wipes or whatever, wipe down, wipe down the areas that we've used or any chairs that were sat in or podium that might have been touched or whatever it is that is the makeup of the room. I can't tell you what it's going to look like anymore, but I'd certainly be willing to help with the sanitizing, assuming I was there in person able to do it. I'm not sure how others feel about that, but that's my thought.
I guess my thought, Sean, I, I, we're all volunteers. That's why we're on the city council, you know, pay a little bit, but.
Sorry, I.
As I said, I'm not sure that's the safest way to do it by just having somebody, you know, decide to do it on their own there. You know, I maybe I just put five shots of spray on and somebody puts one on and I, I don't know, maybe we just started to see that, you know, it, it is a cost. And it's part of this whole COVID thing that we just have somebody come in and sanitize the area after we're done, you know, for the next meeting. We should at least know what the cost would be. And it would be more, it would be certainly consistent then. It would get the doors, the bathrooms, anything else that were there and touched and.
Okay, okay. Is that something you can provide a cost for, Justin?
Absolutely. And, and just to give you an idea, I think it was about 250 after each election for each location. But that was, you know, one, one vendor. And we can, we can get quotes from, from multiple vendors to, to do that work.
Okay.
Zach has his hand up again.
Oh, Zach, go ahead, please. Yep.
So one of the places I would spend about seven of the eight hours cleaning with just pump bottle and regular disinfectant in there. I think the, the cleaning version depends on where our meetings are at. So for example, we have our own meeting room. That isn't going to get used by anybody within the next 48 hours. We don't even need to do anything because the, the virus is not viable outside the human body for that long of time. One thing that Ann Arbor Vets Arena uses, I believe other places, Van Arbor uses. It's a fogger that uses just regular disinfectant spray. One of those devices is, I believe, about 800 bucks. And you can walk around and get the entire arena in about 10 minutes with a single person. Get the seats, you get the tables, you get the doors, all the touch points. So I would recommend contacting them for that type of a device. It's something that a single staff member could wear, could use a couple of gloves, and it can be used for other city facilities at the end of the day or start of the day as well.
Good feedback. Appreciate that.
And I highly recommend the fogger over the spray bottle.
All right. Well, I mean, if, if we want to skip to that, if we want to skip to location of meetings. We had spoken with Dan Cooney at the Encore, and the Encore is the new owner of the Copeland property, which includes the Dexter Senior Center. And we had prepared with, along with council, a draft lease agreement with the Encore for the senior center. When, when we presented that draft lease agreement to Dan Cooney. He came back and indicated that they had received feedback from representatives of the senior center that they would not feel comfortable having us hold meetings in the senior center. And because of that, he did not feel comfortable or their board didn't feel comfortable entering into that lease agreement with us. So at this point, it looks like the senior center is off the table. But I did speak with Carol, Carol Jones. And talked with her about the potentiality of using St. Andrews as a meeting location. We've used St. Andrews for an election precinct, and it's worked out very well. And they've been very easy to work with. So I, I reached out to Carol and asked her if, if she would float it as to whether that might be an option. And I believe Carol received some feedback on that. I don't know if Carol, you, you want to talk about what feedback you received?
Yes, I, yeah, I did just by email, send a message out to my consistory board, which is the governing board for the church and what. And the majority were in favor of, you know, allowing the facilities. And I guess right now we don't, you know, normally we do dinners and stuff like that. We aren't able to do any of those things. And what? So that is something we, we would be agreeable to, hopefully not on a permanent basis, more on a temporary basis, so.
You know, would they be, would they be amenable to then somebody coming in and and sanitizing the place after the meeting? Is that what one of the precautions or do they just not care about that?
Well, I think they would prefer having that happen because we do have, you know, a very small staff that works during the days there. And what a couple of people and what I think they would, I think they would like that to have, have somebody come in and take care of that for us.
Well, Justin, you could maybe find out what that would be either right after the meeting or, or the next morning, whatever it could be for the company that we could possibly find out at least what the cost would be to do that.
Yeah, I think that's a good option to pursue. Why? I see you have your hand up. Thanks for waiting.
Yeah, thanks. I, I just had a question about the senior center. I don't know if that's a completely, you know, if that's all done, but I was just wondering if when we approached them about this, you know, we didn't have a cleaning protocol in place. We still don't. We're, you know, we're obviously working on that right now. And I'm just wondering if there's in any room for them to change their mind if we came back, you know, would say what Zach proposed or having a professional company do it every time. Just, just wondering. I do think St. Andrews is a good option as well, though. Thanks.
Michelle, do you want to comment on conversations with Dan Cooney?
Um, I think you've, I think you've gone over everything from or everything was in your memo and you talked about it with council. There, there's. The only thing I could add is that the, that he and his board are willing to work with the city. But because of the COVID, they, they're not comfortable doing a lease at this time.
Okay, so it's, I, I guess that can, it was what I heard Justin saying about the seniors center being the one that said they didn't want us to come in there because of the exposure risk, but I, I, I'm sorry.
I, I couldn't hear what.
Yes, sorry. Never, it's not.
It's okay.
Don't worry about it. Something that we don't need to reopen.
She was, she was, she was just sort of summarizing, Michelle, that she was thinking that if there was, you know, if we had a good cleaning protocol and threw that in as part of the plan, if they would be willing to change their mind, I think you just trying to find out if the doors closed or if that was just, you know, straight feedback coming from them.
I, I believe the door is closed at this time. I think that the term that Dan used, if I remember correctly, and I hope I don't mess this up, was because of the, because of the COVID situation. And because they, they currently work with the senior center, they felt it was prudent on their part to be good neighbors, or I think that was the word he used, good neighbors with the show, with the senior center. And, and that unfortunately meant that they would not be able to work with the city at this time.
Yeah, okay. Now, I see you have your hand up.
Light on that. The biggest concern that the senior center had is that they do a meals on wheels program and they dispense from there. And it did, this never came up, up to the board. It never got to that level. It was stuck down where people that are doing the actual meals on wheels, coordinating the drivers, that's where the opposition came in. I don't know if anybody ever said to them, you know, we'll clean it. Because that's the worry is that they feel like they dare not serve people and so on, because it would be, it wouldn't be safe and so on. But if we, I don't know if anybody ever said to them, well, we could do a professional cleaning after a meeting. You might be able to, to talk with them then. I, I don't know. I know Dan wanted to do it and Jim Carson did not. Where the, you know, and they're both have good reasons for doing what they're doing.
Okay, well, look, I, if, I don't have any problem with asking the question back. Justin, it sounds like you need to continue. There, there's interest, I think, to go explore the option of St. Andrews. Why don't you, you think you can bring stuff back to us for the 14th on those locations?
That, that would be my goal. I, I, I would like to have something in place prior to January 1st when the Open Meetings Act allowance for no reason virtual meetings ends.
Right, right. So you, so you can follow up on the, the, the offer to clean at the senior center, but if it doesn't go anywhere, just keep proceeding with St. Andrews and bring that back for us to consider at, at the 14th.
All right.
I, I am. I want to just remind everybody that on the, on the organizational matters, the third page, page 18, if I have it right. You know, we've got highlighted in yellow the location that we typically have our regular meetings at. Perhaps we should, for the purposes of putting people in place, you know, so that they could be, start attending their respective boards. Maybe we leave that blank. Or, or we just leave it as it is right now, and then we amend it when we know further where we're going to be.
I think the amendment's the best way to go, Sean.
Okay, so, so. At some point, I would like to get a motion to approve the organizational matters as we discussed. You know, so that we can have that in place before the end of this meeting. I'll make that motion, Paul.
I'll second Donna.
Okay, so motion by Cousins, second by Fisher. The only, the only thing I still have a question mark on, you know, is Paul, I guess if, if, if I, I didn't hear anybody follow up on your comment about OHM, other than Donna mentioned that you'd be looking for a recommendation from, you know, Dan and the staff that work, work with that company. Do we want to? Do you want to place that as a discussion item on a different meeting?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's fine. I, you know, it's just been personal things that I've seen in the construction sites around my home here in the last couple of times, and I know we've had a couple of other issues at times, but I just felt it. And I, and I, I don't know how it worked out with the Wiley issue or not. There was anything involved in that. Somebody missed something or what, but I just feel that sometimes we don't, I don't feel we get a service that I think we should get or maybe should be getting from, from another company, but maybe I'm the only one. I just feel that way and.
Well, we can, we can also certainly. You know, make sure that they get that feedback. I mean, oftentimes consultants will do a annual review meeting or that type of thing. I mean, it, there's nothing wrong with sharing that feedback with them at any event.
I did have somebody question what, why? Or, or I guess a bigger question is, they have an office here in the city. Is that exclusively for the city, that office? Or do they deal with other issues out of that off, other municipalities out of that office or other?
They work, they work for multiple communities. That's just the office location, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So there's motion by Cousins, support by Fisher. I don't think I need to go through the whole list again. I think we had, everybody followed what, where, with the changes that were made. Does anybody have any questions about any of the changes that were made before I called the, or asked Miss Jones to call the vote? Why? See your hands up?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that when we went through the list, I don't know if I'm reading this wrong or if I didn't hear it, but the Regional Resource Management Authority, there's a line next to Justin's name. Do we need to fill an alternate there?
Yeah, we probably, we, we probably do need a temporary alternate. Yeah, thank you. Good point.
Okay, what's the time commitment there? What, when do they meet?
It's like once a month, right?
Correct, yeah. It, it's once a month on I think the third Monday in the afternoon.
It's like midday, I think I saw.
Yeah, it's, it's usually at 1:00 PM.
Okay.
So, yeah, I believe it's the, the third Monday of each month.
Oh, the third Monday. I mean, I, I could do that. That's something we're interested in actually. So unless anyone else wants to, I'd be happy to do that.
That'd be great. I appreciate you catching it. Anybody object to that?
My motion included that.
Okay. Zach, you had your hand up as well?
Yeah, this is a nerdy rules of order point is that the way our rules have been interpreted, we have action items or consideration items and discussion items, and this was posted to our agenda as a discussion item, which generally no action takes place on. So are we going to, as part of the rules, get rid of those differences, which I think would be appropriate? And do we need to vote to suspend the rules for tonight so that we can consider a discussion item?
We did note on the agenda that item may be considered following discussion. On, on both of these, if we were ready to do it, not knowing whether we would be or not be.
Correct, yeah. On the agenda, under each item, it says item may be considered following discussion.
I'll, I call the question.
Yeah, I'm getting right to it. Thanks, Paul. Sorry, just checking. Ms. Jones?
Yes. Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Michelle?
Zane.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Gail?
Uh, yes. Okay, motion carries. So great, we have organizational matters in place. Dustin, Michelle, if you could help reach out to the various chairs of the different boards and let them know the, the new members who will be serving in those positions, I would appreciate it, please.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's continue. On number four, our discussion of council rules. I just wanted to talk a little bit about virtual meeting protocol. If, if I can, just in terms of the efficiency of things. I spend a lot of time trying to make sure during these virtual meetings, I'm catching. Paul, I know you sit quite a way away, quite a ways away from your computer camera, I think, at least that's the opinion I have, and that's why you raise your hand. Zach, for a long time, we didn't even see you. Today we can see you, and are you, are you able to use the participant?
What's that?
Are you able to use the participant? Raise hand, motion?
It, it makes it difficult. My phone doesn't really like when I use it.
Okay. All right, so you're not operating off of a laptop. You're, you're, you're got your phone aimed at you.
Right. There's a bunch of buttons I have to touch and it does weird things.
Okay, all right. Look, I'm, I'm just wanted to, to say, I'm, I try very hard to be aware of all of you. To be aware of all of you, my screen with the agenda doesn't allow me to pin. More than a couple, and if I miss some of you, I don't want that to seem awkward, I'm not ignoring anybody, it's it's just that I don't always have, when somebody else talks. You know, the views at the top shift and I don't always see everybody, so as long as everybody's patient with me. On finding people when they want to talk, I'm okay with this system when we do it virtually. It just means that from time to time, you know, Paul, if I miss your hand, you need to continue to speak up, or Zack. Or or the audience or everybody around can help, you know, just help me make sure I'm calling on people, because the the blue hands are easy to see and it's not always. Easy for me to see the others, so.
Of recognizing everybody and being very patient and trying to be inclusive of everybody, so. I, that's not a, never was on my worry list, I think everybody is willing to be patient too, so thank you for. Enduring with us, some of us weird ones.
Okay, I I'm okay with it, I just wanted to make sure everybody's good with what I'm trying to do, because I I I know I miss people from time to time, and I don't, I don't. Feel good about missing anybody, so. Yes, Donna, go ahead, you have your hand up.
Yeah, sorry, um, what what just happened just now is why we all need to buy buy into. What it is that we're going to do, if we're not gonna use hands, then I think we need to stay in scope and raise our hand until he calls on us. Because you just cut me off, Paul, and I know you didn't do it on purpose.
Oh, I'm sorry, Donna, didn't see it.
But that's what happens.
Yeah.
Paul here, and anybody that's waiting, even with their hand up, and so I think that. I know you're not trying to be rude, but I think what we need to do is, you know, be creative and figure a way. Either all use the hand, or if we're gonna put our hand into the the box, we need to wait until it's our turn. That's my opinion.
I'm I'm happy to try and make that happen and find you as quickly, I just wanted to acknowledge everybody that, and maybe I should have done it sooner, but this seemed to be the appropriate time. I, you know, I'm learning too and about how to try to be efficient at it, so. Did anybody, everybody get a chance to read over the 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 rules? Uh, again. Damian. Uh, Justin both offered some comments that have been shown here and read. I I notice. On. Let's see, page six of the rules, which is, uh, page. Hold on a second.
Page twenty-eight.
Yeah, page twenty-eight. I I I I'm not sure why, I can't remember why we only list. The the six that are there, that that there's a farmer's market, community garden oversight committee, which we don't appoint people to anymore, I don't think.
Yeah, that that should be struck.
So I think that should come off of that, and I'm not sure again why we had all only those six, but that one is not one we put anybody on. We we've, since March twenty-fifth, we've added the council member reports. To the end of the report section, everybody's still okay with having that on the agenda? Okay, I I I see a thumbs up from Zach, Donna, you raised your hand?
I'm saying, I, sometimes there are copious notes that come to me. And there are things, somebody gives an oral report, it's a repeat of what I just read. When they put their written council report in, so I think we need to just be a little more, a little more conscious of the fact that we're all pretty good readers here.
Okay, Jamie, I see you have your blue hand up, thank you.
Um, yeah, sorry, I just wanted to, um, a little out of order, I I'm. I did make a lot of markups and I appreciate Justin for cleaning up the document, most of it was formatting, getting things the same front size margins, everything looking good. Um, I did notice I missed, uh, and then trying to make it internally consistent, so sometimes consent agenda was capitalized. Both first letters and sometimes it wasn't, I missed a capital A in one spot, um.
Come on, Jamie, you did.
On the top of page three, right under consent agenda, in that first sentence, the C is capitalized, but not the A, so I recommend capitalizing A. Thanks, um, for bringing up the council comment thing, because I know there was a, I don't know, some discord about. The purpose or the council report thing, um, so I don't know if that had been decided yet, if, um, these council reports were going to be just things that people were. Sort of instructed to go out and then report back on, or if we were okay having them being, um, personal thoughts, or had that been decided or not, I guess. I I don't know where that landed.
Well, Ja- Jamie, I'm I'm not sure where it's landed either, so I I don't, I I don't have any problem. With the council reports in this section. Pe- personally, the, and this is maybe. I don't know, maybe, maybe my choice or whatever, but you know, it used to be that I gave a report under reports. And then council members had a spot under item M to provide their comments or bring up anything. And it didn't. It didn't preclude. A written something at that point on the agenda. And. This past year, we added. You know, council comments, or the the written council reports are a spot for the council reports under I. And we still have the council comments at the end, I don't generally talk under council comments, so. There's now the way it's set up, two spots on the agenda. For council members and one spot for the mayor. Uh, if you guys are good with that, I'm okay with it, I only need one spot, but frankly, I I sort of think you guys only need one also. But if you, if you like it with two, it, you know, I I, it only goes towards, it sort of only goes to length of the meeting. I mean, if you can, if you have the ability to talk in one spot and then in the other. You know, that's twice, but I'm I'm okay with it if that's what everybody wants.
Zack has his hand up.
Oh, go ahead, Zach, I'm sorry, thank you.
As I'm reading the description of council comments, it doesn't prohibit the mayor from from participating. It says this portion of the agenda is intended to provide elected officials and council students representatives an opportunity to share comments. Um, mayor's elected official, you get a comment, I like the the having the two different spots. Because, for example, today, it gives me the opportunity at the end of the meeting to say that I abstain from the organizational. Um, vote because one of my three employers is listed on there as one of the consulting agencies.
I I I'm okay, if 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 you're, if if, um. If the. Will of the council is that the mayor is elected to speak or able to speak also under M, then I'm I'm okay with it that way, if that's the interpretation. I, what I was saying is that maybe this is my own prose, we've never done it that way since I've been on the board, but. I'm happy to go with that, if that's what what you would like to continue with.
Cut Jamie off, sorry, I'll wait.
Go ahead, Donna.
Well, I just cut Jamie off, she's got a hand up and.
Okay, I I thought I could, go ahead, we'll go Jamie and then Donna.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, that may have just been my original handle, though I do 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 have additional thoughts. I think my one question is, sometimes, I mean, so in the past, when I have come to council as a citizen, I've often prepared lengthy statements. And, uh, I, because it's helpful for me to think about things written out and, you know, presented in that way. And now that I'm on council, I can imagine times where there might be thoughts I want to share with council. That I, you know, might be tempted to just shoot an email to everybody about, but then, you know, worrying about the Open Meetings Act and not wanting to. You know, people to get in a discussion about it, but also wanting something to be on the record, but not wanting to take up the full amount of time at a council meeting to like. Talk through all that or read that whole thing, I guess I'm trying to figure out, is that, you know, what what's appropriate for communications, like if I want to just submit, you know, here are my. Thoughts on this thing, or is that only ever appropriate as a discussion item, I mean, sometimes I work things out better when it's written, and I'm not saying I would need multiple times to talk about it. Written and spoken, but I guess I'm just figuring out like the difference between communications, um, and reports and where a council member would. Put something, you know, in email, like I feel like there are multiple ways you can communicate with one another. But it's, you know, I, yeah, so I'm I'm thinking about those three things at the same time, I guess.
Well, Ja- Jamie, you, um. I think you you've at least had the opportunity to see a couple of emails from me, uh, prior to our last meeting. You know, I'm I'm always very careful when I send an email to all of you to say, you know, no deliberation is intended by this, if you have a question. You know, please call me, okay, you know, I I don't have a problem. With other council members doing that as well, as long as we're respecting that. Sometimes emails get started with, you know, all the good intention in the world, and people feel the need to comment, and then somebody else comments. And all of a sudden, it looks like deliberation, so. We try hard not to to do that too much, okay, or at all, really, but. You know, I think that the these, I think that the report section is fine. You know, it's any, anything you want to share, it's it's not limited, or it hasn't been limited to. You know, something that you're asked to do, and it can be something that you've done that you feel relates to the community as a whole. I think where where it gets a little bit sticky, and I I promised Paul that I would, uh, bring this up is when. You know, we we're all elected to have an opinion, and. We have another rule in here, um, but so what is it, rule number six, I think? Where we, where we talk about, you know, abiding by the decision once the council's been made. And I think that that what's gotten a little bit sticky here is that. You know, I have certainly approached topics in my reports. That have been interpreted by other council members to be not abiding by the decision, okay, I'll I'll put myself out there. I think there's other council members that have. You know, maybe. Called upon persons, not issues. Okay, so from time to time, there's been rules that have sort of crossed over with the intent of the opportunity on the agenda. I'm okay with the format of the agenda, I I I like that we have two non-arranged participation spots. People that want to say something can come in early in the meeting, say it, and then they can go home if they want, or they can wait till the end of the meeting. I also kind of like how this provides. Two spots, one in the early part of the meeting, one at the end for people to provide something that, feedback or thought, I don't want it to be limiting. Okay, but I I think that. You know, one of the things we all have to be respectful of is that we, we need to be able to communicate and and share what we're thinking. I mean, ultimately. You know, it it it's. I I I picked on the fire department, uh, one as, you know, where I think Paul was disappointed with me on what I might have said in a couple of of reports. Or something, but you know, when you think about it, this 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 abide by a decision of council. It's a, it's a very, very tough one. To actually live by, I mean, when when you, if we approve our master plan. And somebody makes a comment that they think that, uh. You know, the area between forest and grand should stay residential instead of. You know, become commercial, is that not abiding by a decision that we've made? I don't think it's in violation, I I think, I think we have to be able to. Talk about the things that are on our mind without them being. Perceived as undermining, I I I don't know how, we we can't take away the 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 ability of people to think of, to talk about what they're, what they're expressing. I'll stop talking and let others comment. Who am I messing with a hand up, anybody, Paul, I see your hand, thanks for waiting.
Yeah, well, I I've I've had a lot of time to think about this. Process. I don't disagree you that we have a couple of times that we can make comments, most of the time, though. No, I rarely have ever heard a council member make a comment at the beginning of the meeting. I mean, that's, I think I would have to say that, and if somebody can disagree, I don't think there's anybody there that that's been almost always citizens. Uh, that have said something and we just don't, they don't participate. The end of the meeting. The comments have been rare that have been anything other than cordial and and informative about somebody going somewhere or. Somebody saying something, you know, or Carol Jones bringing up something that was. Historical, it's been, you know, and have Thanksgiving, nice Thanksgiving, all those types of comments there, it's kind of the end of the meeting, you just want to. Greet your fellow council people and say. Enjoy the rest of the week. See you next week, next meeting. But what I felt. Is that. The present language, it's what says councils must abide by the decision of the council, once a decision has been made. Had been violated. And it was violated, in my opinion, uh, numerous times, either in the, the, uh. Uh, report before. By the mayor or or in his, at times in his, his, uh. Letters that he, uh, that he had put in, or his comments he made in the publication that went out to the citizens in the newsletter. And so I felt it was important that, that when that came about, I would point that out. And you, if you. Will remember. Unless there was something said. That was contrary to what we as a council made as a decision. Where the fire hall is going to be or any of the processes there. I said nothing this week, and I never even mentioned it. We just went on to the next item of the agenda, which was, uh, bills and payroll. And so, uh, I only did that. When I felt that there had been a violation of rule, rules, uh, rule number six and the items about abiding by the council decisions. And I just wanted to point that out to the people here, as well as the citizens, that that was a violation. I would go back and. Think I could identify every one of those times that I did that, and what prompted me to comment on that. I realize this is a, you know, I don't know if Scott's still there, but this this deals, I realize on freedom of speech and the ability to function. Uh, I would also remind you that this is an issue that happened. With the school board just recently. And it was one that was very, very contentious, as you, if you are familiar with the issues, very, very contentious with the school board. To the point where they actually felt they needed to run a slate, first time in history that I've ever known they'd do that. Against a member of the school board, which they believe cost them money. And violated the principles of, uh, of the principals and the staff. And so, uh. I felt this was the only way that I could identify that. After we made the decision, and I think that's what we have to do. Now, Sean may have a different opinion that he feels differently about that, but. I would dare say that the people I've talked to, that if I put down what he's said in black and white. And then put down what we have done as a council, that he violated those rules a few times, numerous times. I can go back and count them. But that was the issue, and I don't know what the difference here is, must abide or just the word abide by the decision of the council. If that ways, it has the same effect. But it to me, must abide, members must abide is stronger than just abide. And so I would be. Objecting to changing that. I do not object to the rest of the rules, as I see some of them com- comments there. Debate, I think, has been cordial. In ninety-nine point nine percent of the cases. Uh, in the recent councils that I that I've been on or have attended. And, uh, it wasn't that way as Donna well knew in the, uh, in the nineties at all, and, uh. That was a bad time with the city or this village at that point in time. The citizens rose up and and made a decision to change the council at that time. I don't see that happening. at this time at all. I think people communicate. They want to know what's happening. They want to know what's that. And I have people all the time ask me, when are you going to build a firehouse? And the answer is not yet. Not yet. And I think I can point to some reasons for that. And, uh, I'll stop at that.
So, so Paul, just, just to take that one step further then. Since, since we're not yet building a fire hall, are we not allowed to talk about the existing one? I mean, we have, it's our facility.
No, you, no, I, I feel you can talk about it. The question is, I guess, is it contrary to what this council made a decision to build a new fire hall and had, and buy a piece of property to put one there? And when you talk about having and remodeling the present fire hall.
The, 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 the only, the only, so I, I understand what you're saying. But the only problem is, is there's no de- definition of time or how that has been determined. There's just, there's just an, an, an idea out there.
I mean, we've tried that.
Well, well, I know, but well, right. And it was pulled, it was pulled back. I'm just saying that right now there's no, there's no action. I mean, the, the, the decision is that the fire hall, we, we, we would like the fire hall to be on Dexter and Arbor Road. So, but that doesn't mean that it's going to happen today or 10 years from now or 20 years from now. So in, in the interim, there could be other things that occur with our existing facility. And how does somebody talk about that without getting accused of not abiding by the decision? I mean, I, I don't get that in this is all I'm pointing out. I get your position. I don't understand that. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, you guys.
Zach, I see your hands up and then Donna.
Yep. It's, it's okay. It doesn't make sense. You're an engineer. You got, you guys have specialties. I, I would say.
Be, be careful. Keep it to the issues, not persons, Zach.
That, that was lighthearted. I, I like that. Take it in that way. Um, I recommend that we, these are very subtle, but established norms of parliamentary procedure. If you have a working understanding of it, it makes sense. Um, I don't want to jump into it too much, but I would highly recommend that we schedule a training as a body, including our commissions and, and those folks uh, with a lady named Coco, who is the guru in parliamentary procedure. It, it will help make sense about whether or not an issue is settled or not, so that we can, can work in a more effective manner.
Okay. If you want to bring back that information, we can look at that. Donna?
Yeah. Whatever, whatever the language turns out to be that we decide on, there's got to be a provision for being able to change your mind. And if you make, I, you know, I got elected to this seat. And when I'm here, I try to do the very best that I can do. When I'm not sitting in the seat, I try to gather information. And if somebody brings something to my attention and I was wrong, I'm happy to admit it. And there's got to be a way for me to change my mind. So that's my concern is that if we get this stuff narrowed down, I, I don't know how much better it will make us as a group working together.
Okay. Well, I, I, Zach, go ahead. Sorry. Coming back to you.
Yep. And so that's one of the concepts that's generally covered in there is that if conditions change or you have new information, that's, um, that's one of the reasons for you to reevaluate and make a decision again. And so that's something that can be talked into, um, through part of that training.
Okay. Mr. Cousins?
Well, I, I guess in response to Donna's comment, what we operate under in the United States of America and in this council is a majority rules. And when there's a vote that is the majority, then that is the decision that's made. You change something by making a motion and then having that motion passed by the majority of the council. That has not happened, in my opinion, when it's come to the discussion of the present fire hall. And that's, I guess that's where I'll end it. It has not made a motion. So when we have additional comments, it seems to detract from the decision that has been made. And I don't disagree with Sean about that. We, we were going to have a vote on the fifth of May. We postponed it then, uh, even in the, with the possibility of the greatest electoral uh, participation in the city that ever was there in this last November. And we have decided to pass it on to a later date in 2021. That, that's where we are. But that's how you change things. You make a motion, you get a second and you vote on it. And if you have four votes, that's what it is.
Okay. Well, I hear you. I, 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 I wanted to, I promised that you that I would make sure to have at least partial discussion or some discussion on this. I, I'm happy if there's a way to get us all on the same page with this item and others. You know, I, I, I think that the reason it was proposed to start with abide is just that the other sentences start with an action verb. Listen, debate, respect, abide. Um, I'm okay with it reading either way. And I, I want you to know that I am trying to abide by those decisions. I'm not trying to. Anyway, that may be following on deaf ears right now, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to go against it. I understand where the, where the direction wants to go. Are there other rules in here?
Sean, before you go further, can I just address the whole package one time?
Yes.
I've been in office a long time here and I was in office when these things were actually fleshed out and developed. And I have watched them change and morph over the years and have thought, I don't know if that's such a good change, but I know that things do change and that's my job to adapt. But those rules started out just as something to make sure that we were congenial. It was just like, this is what should happen. It wasn't something that mandated that something happened. And there's a big difference there. And I think that's part of the problem we have is that we haven't determined which way we really should be doing it. Um, that's all.
Okay. I, I have one other rule. I'd like to ask for your input on if I can. Zach, can, can I come back to you for a second? Okay. Thank you. The, the preparation of the agenda and the materials has a provision in it in the second sentence that any other member or representative of committees, boards or commissions desiring to place a matter on the agenda should notify the mayor and city manager and other responsible administrative officers by 5:00 PM on the Monday preceding the next meeting. So, you know, and, and everybody's done a good job when they've wanted something on the agenda, following that rule, you know, by the five o'clock timeline and they, I appreciate that they've included both myself and the city manager on that notification because we work together and proofreading the packet and knowing what's on, putting together that or knowing what's going into that agenda.
Excuse me. What, where's that? What page is that on?
I'm sorry, Paul. It's on the very first page. It's rule, rule two, two point.
Twenty-three of thirty, Paul.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Justin. Thanks, Justin. Rule two, two point one.
Gotcha. Okay. Now I got it. Thank you.
All right. So I, 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 I guess what I want, wanted to ask is, so, so when somebody requests something to be on the agenda, as long as they notify us by five, typically we give them, you know, through that night and into the first part of the morning for them to get their full packet of information submitted in so that it can be placed. Does, does council want to have an item that's brought up in between meetings, start off as a discussion item? And at before it, or, or, or do you like, right, like right now, it doesn't define whether it can jump right to a consideration item? And I, I think sometimes that it might be good to have a little more time to understand the issue than to be, than to, if you haven't heard about it, have it be right into a consideration item. Uh, Donna?
I agree. That you, sometimes I get something and when it comes up and we haven't had a time to talk about it prior to, to the consideration, I get home and I think, oh man, I didn't think of that. Or I didn't, I feel like there's a lot of material that we have to absorb. And to do that sometimes takes more than just somebody puts their issue in there. Yes, it's familiar to them. But for those of us who, who didn't get it early, I just think that it needs to be discussed first. And unless there's an emergency that comes out of, um, that staff presents, I see no reason for us to do that.
Jamie, you have your hand up, please?
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I am in agreement with Donna that I think, uh, barring some emergency situation, which I think would be coming from staff and not from other council members. It seems like a lot would be gained by discussing it first.
Well, if, if council's willing to try that, I'd like to try that. Again, I, I just think that's a, give everybody at least, you know, two meetings. It means that after it's discussed, if somebody wants to say, I'd like to include it as a consideration item, it gives, it gives everybody at least two weeks plus that, you know, four days of when the first time they saw it in the packet to think over the issue. Paul?
I, I, I guess I don't know. I haven't thought this through enough to think about it yet, but I would have to say that at least 80% of the issues that come up that we deal with have been brought by the staff and here we, we need to get this done right now so that we can get the bid in, or we got this or that. Okay. Whatever it is. Uh, I don't know. There's too many. I, I guess I would like to know what would prompt this that we've had in the past that we've made a motion or give me a couple of examples where in motion where we just somebody threw something out and we voted on it. Without, because we always seem to postpone things until the next meeting. So can you give, I just want some examples, if you have some, Sean, or anybody else of the ones that we had. I'm not trying to be contentious. I just want to know.
No, no, it's okay. It's okay. Paul, there was, there was a pretty good run. I might not be able to say exactly the specifics, but there was a pretty good run starting in January of this year through, through May, where we had almost every Monday, there was something coming from either uh, Jim and then Zach had a, had a number of items from time to time. And you know, sometimes people were putting like more than like five items in the packet. And, and that's, that's a lot to get. There's a lot, that's a lot to, to jump right to consideration on. Now, now in some cases I agree, we worked through those. And, you know, through our discussion, some of them might've been postponed or pulled off or said that could wait or whatever. I just think that it would be a, 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 I don't know, a cordial protocol to all of us that if it, you know, that if you're, you're asking for it to be on the agenda, the fir- the first time we see it, it goes as a discussion because it doesn't actually say in this that it has to go on as an item. It just says place the matter on the agenda. And I'm trying to clarify that.
I got, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for understanding that. I, I now understand a little bit more. I don't just, I don't disagree with you.
Does is it prevents us from communicating with the residents? There it is. And we don't have time to talk. We don't have time to go out and seek their opinion. It just flappo, it's on the agenda. And if we take a little time, we would be able to do that, a better job of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, Jamie, and then I got, I can't forget Zach had his hand up when I was starting to talk. He let me go first. So Jamie, go ahead and then we'll go to Zach, please.
Just a quick point of clarification. Is it discussion items? You, you can never have a motion after a discussion item. I mean, I know tonight we had a note that said item may be considered. Is it like by definition, a discussion item would never have a motion or would it ever be the case that council feels comfortable with a discussion item having a motion at the end?
Well, we, we've, we've typically can, and, and maybe this is my own personal, you know, pros or the reason for the difference in words, but my thought is that, 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 well, there, there's, there's absolutely nothing that I'm aware of in Robert's rules that says you can't vote on something after a discussion. And that there's, that's not prohibited in, in the Roberts rules. As a means of courtesy, as a means of courtesy to our residents and to the people that have fa- have been following along what we're doing, we've always tried to show the intent that if something was intended to be an action item that day, we called it consideration straight off at the top of the agenda as an item. Whereas if it was meant to be a discussion, you said discussion and, and that clued council members in that they could, you know, that most likely that it was going to be one or the other. Now, I, I will admit, we follow Robert's rules and there's nothing that precludes anybody from making a motion at any time. If you wanted to adjourn the meeting right now, somebody can make that motion. But we, as a courtesy, we've operated with the discussion items being a discussion, the consideration items being potential action. I say potential action because, you know, you could postpone the item. In, in the case of the agenda tonight, we wanted people to know that we wanted to have a discussion that, that they may be considered if we could get to a point for that. You know, we, we did that the best we could, but I was just thinking for those items that, that haven't been discussed before that are brought up again by a council member, I think it makes sense to to show them one meeting as a discussion item was where I was going. Julie, you haven't said too much tonight. I see your hands up. Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm getting tired. That's why it's.
Me too.
Yes. We each get our packets the Wednesday before the meeting. I don't see that there's any need for us to have to have two more weeks to debate an item or to consider an item. I think we should be prepared for whatever's in the agenda and take action at that time. I don't think we need an additional two weeks for that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Zach, I'll come back around to you.
All right. So I'll acknowledge that I'm perhaps more comfortable with Robert's rules of order than most people on earth ought to be. Um, I was involved in groups in high school, including Model UN that did that and many groups in college that did it at the local, state and national level. So there's not really distinction of Robert's rules of order between discussion and consideration items. In order to have a discussion, you need to have some motion on the table. So we are kind of deviated and bastardizing from, from there. Personally, I think everything ought to go on as a potential action item uh, for a couple of reasons. One, it's, it reduces the number of times we have to see something. So if we're going to have to put stuff on the agenda twice, guess what? We just added three things to every agenda for every night that we have to go through. Um, it also fosters an environment of inaction. So if we're going to talk about something and then do something later, we're getting out of that active mindset, which is, you know, how the US government was designed to stop it, to make it difficult to pass laws. That's not the purpose of local government. Our job is to, to do things quickly to, to help the community. I will say I'm also comfortable with everything being a consideration item because we can always postpone it. If it is a bigger issue and we need more time during the debate, during the discussion, any member of council can make that motion to postpone it. So every item could be brought back at a later meeting if it's too big for us or too complex for us or more information comes up. So I, I'm in favor of everything being a consideration item with the understanding that it can be postponed.
Okay. Okay. Well, I thought I'd throw that out there just to help clarify what, what we deal with on a weekly basis and at other respective times. So there, there isn't, there isn't necessarily an urgency to pass these today. If there are things that people want to consider talking or debating on, we are getting close to nine o'clock and. If there are things that people want to consider talking or debating on, we are getting close to nine o'clock and I realize the meeting is carried on actually longer than I thought it would. Do you want to, uh, we have the organizational matters in place, which helps put the people in the meeting. Do you want to? You want to keep going? You want to bring back a cleaned up version of the rules for our next meeting? Or, or Zach, I see your hands up?
Yep, I, before this gets postponed in the next meeting, just a couple of points that I wanted to bring up for staff to, to make, maybe poke at. The rule 2.1 on page 23, we were just discussing. I don't think it means what it intends to mean. Um, so as I read it, any other member or representative desiring to place something on the agenda shall notify mayor and city manager and/or other responsible administrative officers or employees at the city office. So the way I read that, I could walk in and just talk to Aaron and say, hey, Aaron, I want to put this on the agenda. She's an employee at the city office. The way the conjunctions work, that's the plain reading of what, um, what that is. And I, so I think that ought to be cleaned up. For 2.3, order of business. Um, again, this is a bit nerdy stuff. K. It, it should be unfinished business, not old business. Um, old business doesn't exist in Robert rules of order. And we shouldn't have tabled items under old business because tabled items only last for the meeting that they're tabled at. Um, so everything would be postponed. One thing that, uh, under 3.4 is we have, we mentioned posting minutes. And I'd also like to have a discussion about us posting resolutions. Um, so that's easier for folks to, to see what we've done. And let me see, I lost my notes here when the puppy dog came in. And oh, one other deviation that we do from Robert's rules of order, though it doesn't happen so often, is sometimes a council member will make a motion so that we can have discussion and have debate on it. Full-on Robert's rules of order says that if you're the maker of a motion, you can't vote against it. Um, but because of the size of our body, it often makes sense for someone to make that motion so we can begin debate and then vote against it. So if we're deviating from Robert's rules of order, we ought to include that as a rule, um, that it is possible for us to do that. And I will step down from my talking on that.
No, those are all good comments, Zach. Appreciate them. Okay, well, why, why don't we try to clean these up a little bit and, and bring them back? Next meeting, is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, um, item five is, uh, hopefully can be, can be quick. It's uh, the, the, uh, just kind of a heads up on a couple of potential uh, meetings, next group meetings for us. We, we typically do our goal setting session in one in February and one in March. Um, I was suggesting that maybe we could move that up to January. Again, we're a, a new board. Several members getting used to each other and thought the interaction might benefit us if we do it a little bit early and I don't know what, anybody like that idea? I threw that out in my mayor report last meeting. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, I see a thumbs up from Zach.
From me.
All right, then I'll ask, I'll ask Justin to help me with, uh, maybe a doodle poll or something to look at the, the dates for doing the, the first goal setting session.
Can do that.
Justin, did you want to talk about the all committee meeting potential for the end of March?
Yeah, um, so in 2019, uh, we did an all committee work session where we invited, um, everyone from all of our boards and committees, uh, to attend a, a work session of council and to talk about kind of what their committees are up to, introduce the members and the intent was that a lot of the folks on, on our different boards and committees really haven't met each other ever or really kind of get updates on what other committees are up to. And, um, we, we weren't able to have one, uh, earlier this year. But, um, it was the intent of staff that, um, we make that an, an ongoing regular event. We, we have a fifth Monday in March. And, um, thought that might be a good time to, to have our second annual, uh, all committee meeting if council is interested.
I think it's a good idea.
Well, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, thanks. Uh, I just want to say, I, I'm, you know, I'm not sure about the timing and I think we'll figure that out. I, I think it's a good thing to put on the calendar for that time and if we have to postpone it. But I would just like to say that when I was, um, chair of A C appreciated that opportunity for us all to come together and I would really like to, um, experience it from the other side of the table as well. I think it, I, I hope you guys feel that it was valuable for council, but I think it would be. I'm done. Sorry. I know it cut out again.
No, thank you. I think we heard you. Okay, well, let's, maybe we can, uh, work towards that. We'll come back to it again in, in January. Justin, why don't we do that? Come back to it at our goal setting session. And if it's still something we want to do, we'll put it on everybody's radar.
Sure. Uh, Jamie has her hand up.
Yep, Jamie, you're next, please.
Yeah, I know. We've kind of jumped around in this last section. I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that Justin had put in his report a question about videoing meetings and staff continuing to record them and is the city actually posting past or future meetings? Um, I don't know if that's a decision we're making tonight. I just, because maybe it depends on where we ended up being physically located. I just want to go on record saying that I would be fine if tomorrow morning, every single meeting we have digitally recorded went up on the city's website. Um, but again, I don't know if that's a decision we make tonight. I just, I know it was a question he raised in his packet. I would be fine with meetings being posted, um, by whoever is recording them. If it's, you know, somebody on the city and putting them on the website. Um, so if we discuss it tonight or the next meeting or whenever, I'd be happy to discuss that.
Okay, we'll bring that question back for sure.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I know it's getting late, so I, I, I had that noted as something to, to bring back if we didn't get to it.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah. Jamie, thanks for reminding us of that. Appreciate that. Okay, if, if, uh, if everybody's willing, I'm, I'm just flip through, clip through here real quick. I think we're down to council comments. Um, I'll let the, uh, two student reps go first this evening. Alex?
Done. Thank you.
Uh, Bella?
Sorry, I was muted. I don't have any comments.
Okay, thank you for attending. Uh, Zach, I'll let you go first, please.
Uh, yep. Again, the reason why I abstained on the organizational vote is because one of my three employers was on there. Um, even though I don't get any money out of this stuff, it's, it's good to keep clean. One of the, the things I want to put into the student reps' years for them to start pondering, I've done this with several members of the Board of Education, is a meaningful way that the city might be able to recognize those students who've done something spectacular without just duplicating what Board of Education might do. So uh, if you win a state championship or you get all ones or As in, uh, music or whatever, some sort of way we can recognize it and celebrate that as a community. And that is all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jamie?
Uh, yeah, I just want to thank all of you and any members of the public who were listening in on this meeting. Thanks for your comments and consideration and have a good week.
Thank you. Uh, Wa?
I, you have to sit on you today. I'm, I'm good. Have a good week here, everyone.
Okay. Uh, Julie?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, Paul?
Well, uh, tomorrow is, uh, is, is the National Giving Day, uh, Tuesday. So our favorite charities, whether it's faith in action, whether it's, uh, food bank in Ann Arbor, or whether it's, uh, watershed council, anything you have. If you feel like that's, uh, something you can do, uh, financially, that, that would be a great, great opportunity to share our opportunities with somebody else. And, uh, there are a lot of needs out there in this day and age. So food banks are, are getting to the point where they're, they're critical for people to survive, not just to, uh, uh, not just to survive, but to actually to live. So think about that. Thank you very much.
Okay, and then, uh, Donna?
Yeah, um, I'd like to compliment, um, Justin on the transition between the manager to the acting manager. It feels to me like it's going smoothly. Now, the rest of the staff can say whatever they have to say, but from my perspective, I, it's going fine. And that's all.
Thanks, thanks, Donna. I'll just, uh, I guess I'll just say thanks to all of you for your participation. Did I, I don't, did I miss anyone or somebody? Let me think here.
You got everybody.
I think I got everybody, right? Okay, um, thanks, everybody, for your participation tonight. If you signed up, don't forget, I think we're going to, you'll be seeing a reminder if you signed up for the luminary making on your street. That's, uh, going to start this coming Saturday. Uh, so that's a good thing. I'm glad we were able to keep that tradition alive. That's a special tradition and there's going to be a lot of people, a lot more people involved in the process this year. So uh, even though we won't all be together to do it at one time. Everybody have a good, have a good week, couple of weeks. Is there non-arranged participation? Is there anyone on the phone or online here that would like to speak before we adjourn the meeting? Again, if so, please use the raise hand feature or star nine on your cell phone. Oh, I see Chief Smith.
Yeah, thank you, Sean. Hey, just one thing, as long as you, we're cleaning up stuff in, in the meetings. One of the things we've ran into in some of my boards is that draft meeting minutes have to be out within five days of the meeting. And maybe Scott Monzel wants to weigh in on that, but um, I still see on the city's website that meetings from three weeks ago or whatever, the draft minutes aren't up there. And I don't know that they ever have been, but just wanted to bring that to your attention, something to look at and, and maybe clean things up.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Anyone else? I'm not seeing any. Is there a motion to adjourn this evening?
I'm moved.
Moved by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Knight? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Have a great two weeks, everyone.
Same to you.
Thank you.
Hey, everyone.
Thank you and good evening.
Good evening.
See you later, Scott.